She can't watch the video in the spirit.
Yeah, good morning y'all. I'd like to call the July 28, 2022 work session to order. The, uh, I'd like to first, uh, I need a motion to consider allowing council members to participate remotely. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Most of you passes. Uh, I need, uh, second up, I need the adoption of a work session agenda. Do we have any additions? Yes. Did I do it wrong now?
Huh?
Did I do it wrong? Okay, and then the joint meeting first?
No, just do the work session now. We'll do the joint meeting when we get into the joint meeting.
Um, D, I have a discussion, I need to add nineteen discussion of Tom Ward, Rowan, and James Dickens. Twenty, discussion of expiration of the COVID nineteen to an emergency. We are scheduling presentations for another conference. And we are going to have a, we could, uh...
We'll do it, we'll do it tomorrow with the discussion.
Something acquisition for the party. That would, that would be that.
I was writing fast.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, so we're table on the presentation this morning.
Second, expiration of the COVID nineteen.
All right, any other changes? Andrew, we're good. All right. I need a motion to approve that you've come to have amended in. All in favor? Uh, motion passes.
We had to.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Who moved that? I'm sorry.
Now we go to...
Okay. Who moved that, by the way? I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you. Yep, you're good to move into the, into the joint meeting.
Okay, if you want to, uh...
Um, I would like...
Open up this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to call to order the Village of Marvin Park Recreation and Greenway Committee, uh, here at the village council work session on Thursday, July 28th at nine, 10 a.m. I do, uh, determine that we do have a quorum.
Missing Bob and Dan.
Missing Bob and Dan.
You're good to go on to the joint meeting agenda, and both, both bodies will need to, need to approve this agenda.
Uh, amend the, uh, committee and add, um, number three, the schedule of National Night Out.
So, good. That's it. So, both, both boards need to approve the agendas amended.
Motion to approve the amended agendas, I think. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And for the, and for the parks and greenways to adopt a joint meeting agenda as it is amended.
Someone?
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And after all, formalization, uh, we are, who has got the national night, uh... Derek? Derek? What you got?
I have an event coming up Tuesday night.
Um...
All right, so Tommy has a great list of law enforcement first responders that will be there. Um, Jill has done a great job.
I can't hear anything.
Talk louder.
All right. National Night Out will take place next Tuesday night. Um, we're going to start at five. We have, um, pretty much everything lined up and organized. Um, Tommy's got all the first responders that are available. Uh, they're going to be there. We've got, uh, food. We're going to grill hamburgers and hot dogs. Um, and then we also have a little bit of some food giveaways. Um, some local restaurants are going to do some samples. Um, we, we have a DJ coming, um, not a band. Uh, the DJ will host some games for the kids on the grass area there. We're going to have an inflatable obstacle course on the big field across from the barn. Um, as requested, we have puppy adoption, uh, two different agencies there. And then, and then we've got some sponsors that will have their, uh, you know, vendor displays set up. So, excited to have them to be a part of the event. Uh, really, the only issue we have left is the movie. Um, because the movie screen that we had lined up got damaged in a storm. And so, we're trying to piecemeal, um, making a movie night happen. Jill has ordered a couple movie screens off of Amazon, uh, but that, we've still got to provide the audio for that. So, I'm trying to figure out if the people we were going to rent it from can still do the audio portion, or if we've got to try to use our sound system and a Blu-ray player, um, to do that. So, uh, that's really the only thing left, would you say? Yeah. Um, I will need, uh, staff and volunteers there as much as possible to help with the food. Um, that's going to be our biggest need of the night is cooking and serving. Um, you know, wear your red t-shirts or your red polos or whatever. That will look good as we've typically always done for National Night Out. Um, but if you can be available for grill or sous chef running food, um, kind of helping prep the plates, that's always been, um, the biggest need. Yes, Christina?
I have a screen you can use. We've used it in the bar before. It doesn't have a stain and it's probably, but he...
Okay, we'll talk. That might be a possible solution.
And I, I think the audio should be able to come just depending on the output from the, the DVD player.
Okay. Well, I'll need to, I'll need to talk with you about that.
Yeah, maybe we might have to meet tomorrow because I'll be leaving and won't be there next week.
Okay.
What's the name of the movie?
Encanto. Look it up. You'll like it.
I don't have a whole lot more to add. Should I examine our argument?
Yeah. Yeah. Red, white, blue. I mean, that's pretty much the theme.
I don't know.
Tommy, did you want to? I think you had some comments.
The, the only thing that I would like to, uh, first of all, looking at, uh, what I would like to suggest maybe for next year, last year's feedback, um, we had a lot of people saying, "Cash is hot." So, there's also an alternate day in October. It's the first Tuesday in October that if they, if it is an alternate day. So, that may be something that we can look at. Um, also convincing the hours down, uh, the original National Night Out event. Time range would be six to eight. And then the village wants to do something else after that. You know, that, that would be great too, if we just kind of condensed that just a little bit. Um, another thing that could draw up was individual neighborhoods. Um, I know it will take a little bit of work on our part, but getting out into the, if each individual neighborhood would like to host an event, we drop fire, that way it's a little more intimate. We get to know, uh, some of the people there in the neighborhoods. I think it would be a great idea, like I said, it's going to be, we can take a little bit of running around on, on sheriff's office park. And I have no problem trying to get people from the sheriff's office to commit to it. Um, so that's, that's what I mean, and I'd, I would love to see that. If it's a small group or intimate, we're getting more and more time with people out in the community and getting to interact with them. Yes, Eric?
I, I think when we first started National Night Out, maybe it was 10 years ago, it was actually done that way. And we had like fire engines.
We should go a little bit. They're not, they're not...
Uh, we, we had fire engines, you know, different folks going to the different neighborhoods. And I believe it was at the sheriff's office request that we kind of moved to this.
We, you guys were spread really thin. So, for anyone who had an event as far as a neighborhood, didn't think it was like...
Trying to get, from a logistical standpoint, yes, it is easier to win one event. But then, we're, we're meeting so many people, and you're spending this brief amount of time with the people, and you're not hearing their concerns and issues that some of them have. You know, the questions we're not able to answer completely.
And that's why I suggested coffee with the sheriff. If you guys want to have something, I mean, it's, it, I, I think that if you're able, if you guys are able to, we can promote this. If they're able to come to coffee with councils that is already scheduled, if you're available and you're working, please come in. Because then, that's, that's another angle. Because I just think you guys get so... I mean, there's councilmen that want to go to these things, I mean, if you think about it. And we could barely get a fire truck scheduled and stuff like that. And that, to your point, John, is exactly why we went to convince.
Yeah, so, so I guess that was my question. Is this, uh, you know, is this something that they're trying to spread throughout the county that we want to move that back that way? Is it a strategy change?
It's, it's each individual where they're going to have the event. Um, me personally, I would like to have it in the neighborhoods. That way, we're getting out, we're looking, okay, is there a problem here? If they got a question, we can answer it, um, versus somebody trying to explain something, you know. We, as long as we're on the same page, we'll be able to, to answer their questions and try to find a solution to it. But I would...
So, are you guys okay with not having a big thing next year? Or just, we can try to coordinate with HOA presidents, and you guys can try to schedule it?
I'm, I'm good with it. I'll try to get as many people as I can.
I mean, I'd hope a lot of like, you know, the main office would be like, oh, I'm not going to do anything, like...
And, and quite frankly, this, if you remember Jamie, if it fires, we would have to source food. Because you got to figure out how to get people there, not that they don't want to come see. But usually, hot dogs, burgers, you think about 16 different neighborhoods, all trying to coordinate that. It made so much more sensible. We, as a council, just reach out to the neighborhood president, HOAs, and say, "Look, here's what we're doing. We're doing it on this day. It's your responsibility to let everyone know this is the day it's coming. Hot dogs, everything." So, it's all focused in one area. And quite frankly, there's an issue in, in, in neighborhoods that, and we're not dealing with it. That's another matter of all itself is not necessary. It's more of a meat-free type thing.
Well, though, after this year, we'll, let's just sit down and talk about it and figure out...
Sure, but it's, it's just a suggestion. Yes, I want it out there.
Yeah, and I, I think one other thing that was considered at the time and why it became more of something to do with the park is that we mentioned, you know, 16 subdivisions or something. But there's still a lot of folks and people that aren't in a subdivision. So, they might, or subdivisions that don't have a clubhouse or things like that. So, I, I think those were some of the decisions that we'll have to kind of weigh as we kind of, you know, rethink this. And, and maybe it's, you know, for folks that don't have subdivisions, you know, you still have something at the park or here, you know. But, uh, those are just some of the things that I remember going into the discussion.
So, without the clubhouse, there's two subdivisions out of work that only have 44 houses. Which one? So, I mean, that's enough.
Well, we're making it. We'll talk after this year, and we'll put you guys through a strategy of events. Anything else you have this year?
Good weather. Good weather and people show up.
A couple of suggestions, and this may tie to, um, our media, social thing is, it'd be a good thing to have maybe an idea coming, people kind of coming. Like, if you were to have a subdivision on our website, click here if you plan to attend. So, we get an idea of how many people will be coming. I think the last time, we, we got a lot of food, and we ended up donating it all to a, uh, somewhere in Dade County. But it, we were scrambling at the end because, and maybe overworked, that's the thing. But if we could think of something like that for the next year as well. And then the only other comment I had was, um, if we're using a screen twice a year, does, does it make sense just to look at purchasing?
Well, you can have this one.
All right, I like three, I like three, just for the record, I like three for you. I, I get that, but I'm just saying...
Well, Jamie, I mean, Jill, 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 what is Jamie, Jill?
We're in the spotlight on you.
She's being interrogated.
That's it.
Jill, Jill ordered a pie, so I need a...
Okay. Well, anyway, any, any other notes here?
No, thank y'all.
Any questions?
When does it start?
Dusk.
Eight thirty?
Eight-thirty-ish. Depends on clouds and earth rotation.
As soon as it's dark enough, it is when we start.
The storm clouds will burn? Stop.
All right, moving on, uh, thank you very much. Discussion of, uh, discussion of Marvin Day 2023 sponsorship events and scheduling. Christina?
One thing I want to mention here. Um, we're in a super animal business party. Because there's a lot of color and there is a lot of people here. So, we're going to talk about specifically, um, once we get to the event, why not just, we're going to talk about that category. If it's not associated with that category, you know, write it in, and we'll bring it back up when we get stuff.
Christina, Christina, you're on us with a heavy hand.
You got roots.
We got lots to.
The first thing up is the actual committee. Um, staff and I sat together for a couple of hours and talked about, um, we debriefed just as you guys have been raised to. We felt that there were opportunities that we could improve in next year if we had different committees. We were running for PRG and then back to council and, and back and forth. So, what we proposed is what's in your agenda packet that looks like this. And it's basically a committee that you all established. Um, and I have volunteers people, some of them, if they are willing to do it, um, for the Marvin Day committee, which I've kind of tended to put in here as Mayor Broten, Jill, and Derek, Jen, and a volunteer from the community. So, we can obviously change that, but there's some suggestions that I had, just because I felt like it was a good mix of things, or we had, I should say, um, with a member from council, a member from the PRG staff, and then a member from the public. So, those would be the four groups that would make the decisions primarily for Marvin Day. Uh, we would have two joint meetings with you guys, just as we did with the PRG board this past year. But they would be the ones that are making the decisions on the shirts, the quantity, the colors, that sort of thing. So, we're not bringing it back to vote for us. Um, that being said, there would be subcommittees from that subcommittee that are specific for the locations themselves. So, any and all events that are associated with Marvin Elementary School, the 5K, uh, Health Fair, anything else that we have at the elementary school, we would have a separate committee that talks about those items that would break back to this Marvin Day committee. So, I wanted to get your thoughts on that. I know it was a lot from Marvin, I know it was a lot from PRG this past year, um, to have to handle everything and then bring it back to council and then bring it back to PRG. So, we felt like this is a good opportunity for us to improve those communications and be more efficient of all our times. I don't know how you all feel about that collectively, but just want to get some feedback.
So, you're basically saying, I lead with my committee and stuff, and then I, whoever leads that committee, come back to the main committee. We're, we're debriefing a lot of what we talked about. That's all we're doing.
Yes, so like you would be on the elementary school committee? So, the staff?
Christina.
We all did. So, Derek would be the liaison, the staff liaison for that subcommittee. And basically, he would be the one that comes back to the Marvin Day committee and says, "Hey, at my little board meeting, we talked about having a 5K, having a, um, uh, Health Fair. Instead of doing Health Fair inside, we want to do it outside. We also want to do apple picking." I mean, I don't know, whenever we all come up with, at that, they would bring it back to the Marvin Day committee. And the Marvin Day committee would say, "Yeah, we like it. No, we don't like it."
Now, I was going to ask on that regard, like, I'm looking at Marvin Bridge High. Jamie and myself, or they are meeting other people. Are we involved with everything that's going to happen at Marvin Bridge? The bank? And every, like, like, what happens?
Correct.
So, he was the one man show with this, along with the rest of the staff.
Famous word?
God. Jamie's God.
So, we're going to spread the love a little bit to you in, in this proposal.
What's that?
I said, we would spread the love a little bit to you.
Got it. Okay. I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
I have a question. After, or do the subcommittee meetings include...
So, um, from a legal perspective, if you formally create the subcommittee by, by a vote and formally appoint people to those subcommittees, they would require agendas and minutes. If you call them informal working groups and it's not made by an official vote, I would determine you would not need to have, like, keep, um, agendas and minutes for those meetings.
Or minutes will be next to you.
Yeah, it, it...
So, that's a core of all the things, so...
Yeah, I would literally just encourage, encourage the groups to meet, come in village hall on a day, have their little, have their discussions, and just report back at the, the core meeting. And have all, and have everything discussed in the minutes there. That would simplify things logistically and formally.
And the reason she's asking that back soon is determine the number of meetings that these subcommittees are going to have. And a lot of it could be done via email and just maybe, maybe quarterly. Um, and then leading up to the event, maybe, yeah, who's ever...
Yeah, and if it needs something to add, I think it's as formal as phone calls. Yeah, three or four people want to call and say, "Hey, this is what..."
Or you may only need to talk to, like, Christina, Christina may just need to talk to Austin Law about her garden tours. And that's all she needs to talk about. She doesn't need to talk to Amy or Randy or Gerald or anything. She's just going to talk to Austin Law. And then they can, they'll report back to, and say, "Jill," and she'll be the staff person. And then the children will report back to the...
Yeah, I don't hurt. Sometimes I think it's more efficient for everybody if you got to execute it deliberately. So, we're concerned that Austin has to sit there. We've got to do all this secondary, like, subcommittee, informal, main committee, and then the whole committee.
So, I would not use the word subcommittee. I would call it a working group.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay. That's the touchy word.
It's a fucking word.
Good. So, if you just want to have working groups, then the committee itself will be... Is everybody good with that? Is everybody good with being on that committee? Like, um...
I do need to ask a question of the PRG board now that we're talking about this committee. Is this okay, Christina? This is about their scheduling. So, you guys have, the PRG board, you guys have a couple of work sessions coming up specifically for Marvin Day. Do you want to keep those on the schedule? Or do you want to take those off since we're going to have a committee?
I don't, I don't take them off. I think you can take them off. And if you want to, you just replace them with the Marvin Day committee.
Yes, we...
Where John and I would not be here.
And John, John said he's going to be absent from the September PRG meeting. Are you guys okay? Uh, John said he's going to be absent from the September PRG meeting. Christina, Jen, are you okay with pushing that meeting off one week?
Absolutely.
What would that be?
It would be September 13th.
It's the day after Labor Day right now. So, we're going to push it a week. Yeah.
So, if that's okay with you guys, can, can the PRG board make a motion to amend the meeting schedule as discussed?
Some would.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Done. Cool.
Does anyone from council have any objections to this Marvin Day schedule, as presented? So, can we formally create this, the... So, I made a motion to create the Marvin Day committee with myself, Jill, Derek, Jen, from Parks and Greenway, and Deppsoe from the public for this event.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second act is, we are going to talk quickly about the sponsorship letters that we're going out. There's other agenda packets. I don't know if y'all want to suggest any changes to that, but this is the same one that we sent out this year. I was like this. Yeah, no, I think it was good. I do have questions because, and we've got, like, painting trees. Were people, have we done that? Have we broken plaque or have we done any, uh, elsewhere, not a bit of tree? But do we have that, or do we have it all?
So, we, we didn't have a 7,500 sponsor, so we are not obligated for any trees. We are obligated for three plants. And we are already researching what that plant will be. And I've already reached out to the sign person to start talking about the plaque.
We didn't have this plaque.
We didn't have it. They fell through.
Okay, that's fine. So, then that would be my next question. I mean, next, where are my next? Who was plaid? None, nobody. Who was gold? And do they want to read out them? Because they have first rate refusal per, um, this letter.
Yeah, so gold was Jones Holmes.
Right. And...
Your wife?
All right, we, we should have contacted Jones Holmes now to see if they want to be a gold sponsor next year.
Well, I mean, I think when we're ready to go out and start the sponsorship...
I'm starting now. I already have two people who want the form from last year. And I'm going to try to get them to step up their game. So, I, how many people do we have?
Three.
Okay, so we have to wait for two additional if these don't want. If they want to do it, we have to wait for two additional.
Yeah.
So, I have a copy of the, um, sponsorship letter that Jamie Depp's last year, this year. We can use the same contact people if y'all want. She was already assigned. You know, just did that. Okay, definitely.
And when would we want to start reaching out to them?
Now.
Now?
Get it done now? I mean, I already, I mean, I already talked to Firetruck about it. I already talked to Tom's Festival about it. And I already talked to somebody who was just too busy last year because it was tax season to it. And they said, "Give it a sponsorship letter now to get it done next year." So...
Top of mind, I have a question. If we have somebody that does sponsorship, are we, as the council, are we going to try to support that business?
Well, we do it in the sense that we give them... We ask those, or...
We have a council, I mean, we, we make purchases today if we go there. We go to help the community today. Do we, if we have a choice, are they of, of this, of choices, like, we prefer... We don't include stuff like this.
Okay. I mean, usually, there's a process or formality of, if it's a bad situation, you know, you have to...
No, but it's like, if you're going to get lunch from somewhere and there's somebody's sponsor, like, you know, get lunch. That'd be...
Yes, and I have, uh, go through with bricks, bits of, they, uh, already asked me. They are willing to give us, like, blue gift cards and things, but we'll give away prizes and things like that for next year.
Okay, they don't want to be a sponsor?
That's, this is the first thing that they want.
Okay.
Uh, I think they probably will.
Okay, I mean, I would say, let's try to make them to be a sponsor, because then we can give them a table and a tent.
But they want to also give us gift cards.
Okay, gift cards, giveaway.
Well, usually tents, well, I'm told is you have to have a giveaway in that tents. I mean, that's a bridge to tents. All right, so that was...
So, they could give away the cars, that's a tent, should have a sponsor.
They came up to me, what, they, they, because I told them, they wanted, no, I told them to be June 30th. They came up to me and said, "Uh, Jav, I have some giveaways, you know, the small, uh, gift cards." So, and, but I'll, I'll, I'll go back and ask them if they want to do that.
I would do that. Any other changes to the, to the letter? Or do you think it's good? I think it's good.
Yeah.
Um, can we, Austin, is we're good with this? Can we email them? Can we have Austin email out? Yes. I'll email them. Yeah. Because I don't have a downlink for this format, sorry. I mean, I'll email you the sponsorship letter and the spreadsheets. You either go to the same email. Okay. Just for clarification with the plants and the trees, I guess they're going to park. Do we have, like, an area that they're going? Or they're just going to be, this is the one for this guy, this is for that guy, and...
I'll be coming to you for that recommendation.
I have some bear spots. Perfect.
I think I work with that just a little.
So, so the plaid people got, which we didn't have, but they got trees. So, will people get plants with a plaque? Can you hear me? I can't hear you because you're muted.
Yes, I can hear you, Jen. I can hear Joe and Bob, but I can't, I can't hear the other side of the conversation unless that speaker is near. Who's talking? I can't hear a thing.
Okay, we'll try to pass it around and talk really loudly.
Well, you're, I mean, you're coming in great, I just, just got to be here.
Well, it is him.
True story.
We'll, uh, we'll sign him up for PTSD, Jen, since we got to sit next to her.
So, closer, so we can get a little closer.
Okay. So, okay, Christina's going to talk to there about that, because Christina's got bear spots in the park. Oh, I know, I know, it's gigantic. Okay. Do you want to drink anything else? If you want to put a letter, I'm going to say. Okay. Yeah. Okay, moving me into the next item, which is the actual event. So, this is, this is where our ground rules are going to stay. Um, if y'all talk about anything other than, we're talking about that now. We're going to write it down and come back to it when that venue's up. Derek and Jill have put together this nice little chart of events, with all the sub-events within that location. Uh, the intent is for the working groups to have, um, most of the discussion about these specific things here, or which went through a high-level overview to debrief, to, to allow you all to debrief on these things. And I'm just going to turn it over to Derek now as he's prepared his, um...
And I'm just gonna turn it over to Derek now as he's prepared his, um, very.
Well, thank you to Jill for preparing this. And again, we really just want this to be like a high level macro. Um, I mean, I'm thinking like a thumbs up, thumbs down. I mean, if you've got a comment that you're just super passionate about, you know, that um, we, we can try to address it, but really, we're just looking for a, a good overview of what each location will look like. And then we'll let this up, the working groups establish, you know, get into the weeds and the details. So, yes, John?
One, one quick question about the date. That's later than this year. Does that conflict with graduation at all?
Graduation goes in the middle of the week, not our weekend.
Well, it used to always be on Saturday. This is the first year since COVID, I think they did it in the middle of the week. Cause it used to always interfere with our.
We are typically saying this until they give us a thumbs up and we have to move it again a little.
Okay.
But we, May was not working at.
Conflicted with a number of other big events, I think.
College graduation.
Yeah, I, I just know that first weekend in June, it used to always be graduation was Saturday, that first weekend in June.
I didn't have that, I think, over the past two years, but.
Well, for the COVID, things changed, but yeah.
So maybe we'll take it that way. But will the potential this is the date until we get the thumbs up in the high school, which should be in August, Austin?
It might be earlier, but this, when they set their athletic calendar, it's probably August.
I mean, August is the month I said.
Okay, so we'll.
Oh, yeah.
We'll find that out as soon as we can.
And the other, that's a big question that I'm thinking about is, um, my wife is now on the Marvin Bridge family, but they need dates for the car show.
So the first thing is Friday night kickoff with the private home and garden tours. We had this originally on the Saturday. And one of the suggestions from staff is to have it on a Friday night and get coffee events. Don't know how y'all feel about that. We felt that it would be more attended.
A garden at night?
Well, evening.
After six to eight.
Yeah.
One, two.
One and two.
My garden's much better than this one.
Does anybody oppose that idea?
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
I, I'll just say, I, I did get feedback from some of the people that had them, that the ability to kind of distinguish that from all the other things might be helpful.
I like that.
And in some way it might do that.
So it sort of happens that evening would be a good idea?
Okay, it's worth it.
Okay, I like it.
And it'd be cooler too.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we, yeah, the cooler and all that. And definitely, I mean, if you're trying to get people, I mean, you've got four different locations here. And then expect people to bail from one of these activities because they're already engaged in and go ride around. I had this pastor, cause I was on the tour um, uh, as an artist and, and he would have thought that like, you know, people would go to Fire Form.
Come over.
And then like while they're riding to one of the other places, would have done the tour, but there was some confusion about the maps. And I don't think people really even knew like that they could do that. So it really hadn't been a six.
There was a lot of.
There wasn't a suggestion as to like, how are you planning your day, you know, hit here and then go there. Um, so people didn't really do that. So maybe separating it out could be the highlight that, that makes that work. Or it can make it such an outlier that nobody really goes to do it, but I'd be willing to take a chance.
Yeah, so let's try this year and see how it works.
Yeah.
So now you have the items that is assigned to the youth and park sub-working committee?
Working group. Working group.
Um, so we'll add that in to y'all, free on the details of that, but unless any further discussion on that, we're going to the elementary school.
Real quick, you know, I mean, I don't see missing events was like town home, you can read, we're gonna forego that.
Uh, write it down. We'll come back to that in just a little bit.
And then Fire Form. Those are the ones.
Yeah, write down Fire Form, because they're definitely.
And, and again, another question. If, if Jamie and I are in charge of Marvin Bridge High School, okay, without doubt, we've worked as a team with, with the events that time. But could we, or was it intended that, for example, the car show, I would handle the car show because it's a marketing. We would handle the, uh, the, you know, the band event that night. I'm just asking, in other words, or we just.
I wrote that down. We'll come back to that when we get to those stuff. There's.
Okay.
Um, let's start off with the Marvin Elementary School working group, contacts, the five K fundraiser, DJ rental, health fair concessions.
Start at the top, five K fundraiser. Yes, those are awesome. Do them again. Thumbs up. DJ rental. Yeah, do the joke. Thumbs up. Anything different? Was there any?
Here's, we're, let's just do this. Here's what we're proposing. Let's just, if you have any objection, then.
Yeah.
Say, you know, speak up. So five K and the fundraiser, do you, do you have any objections if there are the five K or the fundraiser?
No, but you, you paid out the lead personally to the committee, I mean, uh, the event.
He can still do that.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna tell him he can't buy this.
I'm not gonna ask.
Having a DJ.
DJ, yes.
Okay. Um, doing the health fair, we wanna move it out.
Well, I like it, but what was the feedback from the vendors? Did they like it?
Yes.
Yes.
But we wanna leave it outside and make it more of a block party, get them more foot traffic.
Cause the gym, people weren't sure to go in the gym.
Yeah.
Okay, I like that. I think, I think.
Outside the gym.
Outside the gym.
Even when we had it in bed, it's twenty-first was last year. In the morning. It's in the morning.
Yeah, that was the only thing, even for me personally, when I was there, I didn't realize, I mean, I knew that there were all these participants. I didn't realize that was open.
Right.
Okay, so everyone likes to.
I think we did, it will help too, because it'll be more energy and more announcements about, you swing inside, you know, whatever.
Um, foregoing the two little coffee food trucks and doing more of like just concession stand, having.
How the coffee, they, did they have feedback? Did they do okay or?
Um, they did not do well.
Okay, so there's a little coffee drop, but what do you wanna do instead of the concession stand?
Like have like the scouts come and sell gemnuts or um, coffee or.
Sure.
You know, something more in our community versus having a food truck that needs a, a high minimum.
They were laughing.
Okay, blood, blood mobile.
They, they were happy with their ten people, right?
They were happy. Yeah. Uh, we do need your red porta potties. We feel like we need your red porta potties for outside. If we're gonna move away from the gym. You know, we can have them tucked away behind the blood mobile or off to the corner.
Yep, definitely.
Okay. Anything else that you feel like's missing from there? Awesome. All right. Want to go down or go right?
Where are we going?
All right, let's go to the high school. Car show, a lot, you good?
Yes, perfect. Sure. That's a giant success.
In fact, it, it was becoming bigger and larger than life because people were just showing up. Now, it's a people who just, you know, they wanted to pre-register maybe to show up. And so it started expanding to the other lot.
So let me interrupt you quick. Jill had a comment wrote down. So you being assigned to the working group doesn't mean you can't do something else in another area. So you can definitely do the car show. It's just we would assign you portions of the working group in that um, that location. So the car show is actually at the high school, so it, it's totally fine for you to fill in there. We'll, we'll kind of divide it longer and figure that out in those working group committees. If you don't feel like you're being included anywhere.
As we look at these different locations as a subcommittee or subcommittee, um, we should also report back with a fairly good number of budget and stuff. Because we've got all this stuff, we, as a subcommittee, we said, okay, for Bob, I'm gonna come back and say it. Marketing has been costing us.
Yeah, that's where the stuff, the, the, keep on calling it a subcommittee. That's where the working groups will discuss all that and then report back to the subcommittee.
Sure, rather than later after.
Right, because that, that, that's the most important of having a subcommittee, this is costing us.
Well, when we, when we exit this meeting, staff will work diligently, playing meetings with those respective working groups, so we can get a lot of that stuff signed.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in here because um, we've, based on all the feedback that we got from staff, um, from some of you guys at PRG. We, I don't think anyone really loved the idea of the car show ending and then there being like a gap before the concert. So we sort of brainstormed a way to kind of keep the day kind of going and flow right into the evening portion at the high school. Um, so there are some things that we will talk about with the big committee and also with the Marvin Ridge High School working group. Um, just things that we can bring in, um, maybe coordinating with like the marching band since they're putting on the car show, the color guard. Um, that's why you'll see entertainment listed there. Like, are there some local um, people we can partner with to have maybe a scheduled events? Kind of fill up that window between the car show ending and like the music and the concert starting. Um.
Just one thing I'd add. I, I think um, Cedar Hill would also be amenable to moving their thing to, to better do that. Cause I think we had like an hour gap, which.
And we'll talk about Cedar Hill. They're on the list as one of the people to talk about. Um, the other thing we thought about, since the art was, um, it was a big hit at the barn, at the park. Um, people kept asking, is there any other artists that we can see? And yes, we gave everybody the map. Everybody got the addresses and a bio of each artist. But it was tricky, I think, to convince these people to take their kids out of the park and go to someone's home. Like, I wouldn't bring my kids to someone's home. I'd be nervous about that trampoline in the garden. Um, so we thought about, how can we incorporate this, the great number of artists that we have? And we know there's a lot. We thought maybe having a portion of the parking lots at the car show at Marvin Ridge High School be almost like an artist expo as well. We would have done it in the park if possible, and that may still be something that we decide based on space. But um, there's probably an opportunity to have a whole row of artists that set up their own kind of area. Um, that we can drive people to them. So we can still get the artists, the exposure that they're looking for, and they're not just pigeonholed to whoever comes to see them on Friday night. They will have another opportunity on Saturday to be a part of the event, but at one of the locations. Right? That's just an idea. Um, and then just kind of creating a pre-concert hangout area for the people that come early. Um, again, incorporating the vendors, making sure that they have fun stuff at their tables. They've got giveaways, they've got games, raffles, whatever they're doing. We can break some life-size games in depending on budget and just kind of create a space where people can have fun. Like a photo booth was tossed out as an idea to bring to the committee, just kind of something to amplify the energy and get people to stick around instead of leaving and then not wanting to go back.
Doug Tan for mayor of Rhode Island.
Yes. We're actually thinking you. You go there and do all, thank you.
Derek, Derek's gonna want the, uh, for uh.
I do not.
So that they work out, hold there in the park, give them that back. And that's a nice enclosed area there that artists wanna be able to have. Up the back of the park? Not up the front. It's, if you're in the barn, it's to your right. They, they have lights hanging in there that they work out in the heat. Oh, yeah. I mean, it's a perfectly good sized area. It's convenient to do that.
Derek's a big fan of art in the park, so that's really what he's pushing for. I'm kind of like, well, let's see how many artists we get. If we get so many that we feel like we can't give them adequate space at the park, then we'll consider moving them to the school. But both are options that the committees and working groups will talk about.
So that's a decent sized place. Big position. I don't have any hours. If you get too much hours.
Anything on the list for Marvin Ridge High School that's a concern or anyone who's confused about or doesn't like or?
Can you utilize this, I told you, just like here?
That's all I'm asking. But that would not happen on. If that might actually, during the car show, I, I would like to see the food trucks down closer to where people are. Because people are like, where's the food? Where's the food? People have walked that hill or. I found that, that it would be much more convenient to have food trucks down. Maybe try to sell more stuff.
So we also discussed, you know, the car show really does need to remain, in our opinion, something that the Marvin Ridge Band Boosters kind of organizes. But we felt very siloed in this past time where they were sort of doing their thing. The right hand didn't really know what the left hand was doing. So one of the ways to avoid that is to have Eric Berman or whoever else is going to represent the um, Marvin Ridge Band. Be on that working group for the high school so that we're working together collectively on the vibe we wanna create. If it's gonna be a part of a Marvin Day experience, then there's a certain vibe we wanna have. We wanna have some fun. We wanna do this and that. We wanna have input on where the food trucks are, which bathrooms you rent and that type of stuff. So we're working together. And maybe not doing separate rentals, which had created a little bit of an issue as well, but just kind of collectively working together. So we can get some of the improvements that we want out of that show as well.
Love it.
Any other?
I, I think, I think all was spilled between the end and the car show. The thing was spilled through the storm.
Yeah.
But. But to, to your point about, in this, this needs to be done ahead of time. If you're really interested in the color guard, I can tell you, I mean, they're world-class. Throw the band in there and have a performance that they did every halftime at football games with the color guard. If they know that's happening, keep in mind, it's off school. So they're out of practice. Well, they're done with their competitions and.
Professors.
Right, because it's, those are things that we, we give a chance to highlight out of the band and the color guard and, and that's something that we're for, remains to be planned. We're talking.
Yeah, and that's our first choice. I mean, we wanna showcase Marvin as much as possible. So using Marvin, you know, school, things like that is our first choice. If they're not available or we can't do it, there's other kind of entertainment options, but that's really our, our goal, I think, is just to keep showcasing Marvin.
Can y'all talk about that in our working group committees? So, you know, those things to find out.
Okay.
Is there anything else from the high school? You wanna talk about?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the park.
Derek, how far?
Do you wanna?
Yeah, so the animal exhibit seemed to be, the raptor center exhibit seemed to be a big hit, um, but also a slight name point because uh, of the limited capacity in the barn. I know Austin had a couple of people that were really frustrated that he wouldn't let them in because we had reached capacity. And they were sort of bummed about that. Uh, I'm glad they were able to leave some of their display and they had a table. So even though the actual live demo was over, we could still send people over to um, kind of learn and stuff. We wanna sort of capitalize on that that seemed to be popular, but maybe expand it a bit and have more um, more exhibits than just one potentially. But that'll be, that'll be a conversation for the bigger one.
Right.
But um.
One thing, I would, I would probably move the pony rides from Cedar Hill to the park because I.
Can we wait till we talk about Cedar Hill to address that?
Yeah. Everybody good with garden tours again?
Yeah.
Yeah. Nature tours.
Well, when you say garden tour, are you talking?
Well.
Cottage.
Cottage garden.
That's right, doing this, yeah.
Community gardens, nature tours.
Okay, so not, that's not giving back to what's going on.
Mountain ride. Um, disc golf. I agree with that. That was a big hit.
Yeah.
Um, having some food trucks there.
Yeah. And I like the idea of having some music, even if it's piped in, it just makes it feel like.
That's cool. Kind of boosting up the activities for the kids, more like a kids' fun zone.
I worry about the house now. I know I was thoroughly opposed to it, but I think having some food bounce house would be.
Yeah.
I know, I'm, I'm gonna take the most.
Can you just come out to you want a bounce?
I won't. I don't, that's a dog.
Yeah.
That's what, that would sound.
You want the, you want the puppies there if they're willing to?
Oh, yeah. Puppies, I agree with you.
I would, I would agree with you.
No matter what we're doing, there should be baby dogs. Yes.
And a DJ, some music.
Yes.
I heard there's a lot of vehicles that they work for.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
Anything you think is missing from the park?
No, but can I get back to the animals exhibit really quick? I did get feedback from Raptor Center. They thought it was great as well. They would not be able to grow live birds next time. They will, they will be able to do a, just this light, they can pass it like, not have it, they will set up and talk about Raptor Center, but they're live birds.
That is still perfect, I can tell you, because that was something we were worried. They were gonna be offended if we didn't walk the live birds again, so.
I just, they're live birds more important.
Yeah.
There's also color of one of them.
Yeah, they're on, they're on this together.
Yeah, because we work with them with the heritage business, so they're, they're hard to come across.
Yeah, I'm going to come back to that.
Have we talked about a schedule? I think when different areas will be open. I mean, some of it's kind of obvious, but have you guys looked at the parking schedule? How many people were in last time?
Probably keeping what was last time.
Because the park was sort of what, nine, two-ish, three, about what we've been on?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Probably is. We'll have the working group, you know, iron out the details, but.
Well, if you're trying to keep it to where we were before, that's true because it's a place that's not, I don't believe there's that. So we talked about Cedar Hill. Okay. It was a gigantic frustration trying to procure pony ride vendors last year and dealing with last minute cancellation or insurance riders and just all kinds of stuff. It worked out well. The people, the kids loved it. We had a lot of pony rides. But it just seemed to me strategically to make more sense to utilize Cedar Hill in a bigger capacity. They've got ponies. They can do pony rides all day long. They're right down the street. We want to incorporate them into Marvin Day. So I did reach out to the owner and kind of spoke with her and said, I think it's mutually beneficial if you want to offer the pony rides at your location. It's, it takes, it's less on us to have to organize that, make space at the park and deal with all of it. They can do it there and also it'll help drive traffic to them. So they can still have their, you know, whatever that looks like for them. Let's say we do pony rides from 12 to 2 and when the pony rides are over, they're going to go right into their riding showcase where they're going to do all the different styles of riding, western corsage, what have you, English, to show them. Hopefully the pony rides will draw and then they get to sort of do their thing. And then also after pony rides, I've spoken with her about capitalizing on the people when they're finished with pony rides, maybe she has her students or her staff or boarders taking them around, giving them a tour of the property and the barn. Who knows how many less than kids they might sign up or how many boarders they might acquire. So trying to make it worth their while to take the pony rides off my plate. And really, really hoping. Now, she said she's, she's down for it. She's available. It really will depend on the date that we land on ultimately because June tends to be a big show month for equestrians, which is why it's so hard for us to procure a pony vendor in May. A lot of them are traveling and doing the show circuit. But she said as long as we're here, we will do it. So that's what I'm leaning towards. But I guess, I guess I need to know if the pony rides become something that cannot happen for Marvin Day '23. How upset are we going to be?
And if we can get the insurance part off of our plate as well, now that it'd be a part of the, because they already have their own insurance for riding, all that stuff. It's already going to. Point showcase, 25, again, back to the, they can't do it, they can't do it.
Was that Andrea that you did speak with? Because I actually went to Andrea before last year about pony rides or recommending anybody. And she gave me some names of people that ended up kind of, so I don't know how many of their horses there are pony ride horses, you know. I guess that's kind of her. If she says she can do it, I defer to her.
Pony ride is an interesting term because they probably don't have many ponies and they'll probably be using a regular horse for the pony ride. But I don't know if she was less, I don't know if she didn't really offer because at the time, I think we were asking for horses to be brought to the park and pony rides to happen there. Whereas I feel like her not having the trailer and worrying about her horses being brought off property makes it a little bit easier perhaps for her to say yes. She's a little bit like, sure sounds great, you know, would love to be involved.
And she does summer camps and stuff like that, which are new riders. But even those horses are typically more trained horses than ones that just get led around on a lead rope regularly.
So I kind of wrote her back and said, I'm so glad, but like, can you just confirm that you want to be involved in the way that I am suggesting? You're going to do pony rides for us and you're going to do this.
I just wanted to make sure that's okay because I defer to her.
This, this does happen at Cedar Farms. I don't know if it's worth the effort to do it at the park.
Well, we did, we did 112 pony rides.
And you would have done more if you had.
And, and we had to get rid. So as far as the people that were doing it and the draw that it was, I think it was, I think it was huge. But there would still have to be some changes. We wouldn't have them waiting out in the sun. We'd have them wait on one of the walking trails near by or some things like that.
I think also it was a big draw because a lot of people felt like that's all there was for the kids other than the playground, right? So if we had other, we had a whole kids zone where there was a bounce house and there was a face painter and there was some other things happening, then who knows, right? But that was really all we had at the park, the kids at that moment, according to some of the parents.
So the Cedar Hill Farm slash pony rides, however, when I do it, that's going to be put on the working group for the Ethan Park, right?
I was going to go high school.
I was going to go that too.
Because they're so close.
Okay.
Well, I have a question. You keep saying ponies and everybody says ponies. You're talking about a little shit with ponies. But in horse terms, if you own a 15-hand horse, that's a pony.
Correct. That's what, that's what they have.
Oh, okay.
Say horse, 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 guard.
I mean, let's say, most people will say pony rides.
A simple ratio.
The little ones don't really get rid of.
Most people will say pony rides, even if it's not technically a pony. But I don't see Cedar Hill choosing a 17-hand horse for their pony rides that day. I see them choosing something safe, reasonable.
Personally, my direction, 14, 15, a horse, a separate sized horse, when you bring five or whatever. You know, I mean, then you know the standard what they're coming for.
Anything else on the park that you want to talk about or Cedar Hill letting the records do their thing on some of those items? The other items in the park and our parking law or town hall, meet and greet, which I put under the elementary school working group?
I didn't do it yet. It was back a few more. I mean, really, it's not going to be where we do.
Yes.
With stress mystery. Are we going to roll people like we did last year?
I think so. I agree. I'll see all day, but yeah.
We'll put that in the working group for the elementary school and they, that committee can plan out those details out. Byrford was another one. We tend to put that under the Ethan Park group. So that working group can.
I would say the only thing that I would take them, the rest is mine. I would talk to them and sit down. They are all in. They are walking out basically entire Saturday. They're going to DJ. They're going to food. They're going to call her.
Oh, that's cool.
They're going to be sure to open a house for them. So.
Yeah. And I left, I left them off, I left them off because I thought they already have their, their big day that they do all that. I wasn't 100% certain that they were going to do another one so soon to be a part of that. So.
They are, they totally want to. They're all in. So, I mean, they're going to DJ. They're, they want to make it and open a house for them and incorporate us.
And there are other DJs. And then the last item that I threw down was use, use a vacant space at Village Hall and assume we mean parking, that sort of thing.
Well, for artists, I'm thinking as an option, artists like being inside here or right in the park or put under a tree or whatever. This.
I think we need to keep it consolidated. I mean, we'll say, I can work on that, but I would say keep it consolidated and possible.
Is there anything that we did not talk about in total that we wanted to talk about or that you don't see us here?
Just, I was just wondering, how did we end up from a financial position with the sponsorships with all the costs that we had? Was there?
That's a good question. And Jamie's on the line. I think that we were definitely over. It was a couple of thousand dollars. Jamie, if you can hear us, if you can chime in, look and let, let us know what you remember in terms of the current budget from the sponsorships.
Yeah, so Austin? He said over a thousand.
No, we had extra money.
Oh, we had?
Jamie, Jamie, through there.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi. How were we with the budget for Marvin Day? Did we have extra or were we lacking?
No, we had extra leftover. I'm trying to remote into my desktop to give you an exact number, but we definitely had money left over. So we did a really good job last year. And trying to see.
Can you say it again?
Two thousand, $2,000 over, approximately in there.
You want to pull it up?
Yeah.
So. Do you need an extra?
No, it's fine. I thought we were $2,000. Just in the interest of keeping things moving. If you come up with it, great. But we were in the process.
I think we lost about $1,000.
Yeah. We spent, we spent around $34,000 out there and we had plenty to cover all of that. So I was just trying to look at what we put into the Marvin Day Fund and we moved over, over $14,000 into that. So, you know, we did, we did really good. We had plenty. We have some leftover for this year.
Yeah. The only other thing I piled is maybe a consideration for all committees that, working groups, sorry, that the fundraising side of it for different things, whether it's, you know, it's part of the community, like the library has been one of the things. Keep that in the back of your mind if there's a way to promote something that involves, like obviously we're helping out the Marvin Ridge Band and the Booster Club. But it just wasn't timed right, I don't think with the, and that's going to be an ongoing thing with the library for instance. But it's part of the community. So that's all I have. Anything else?
Christine, I was looking at those listed t-shirts. If you want some of that, I would buy, I would really want to stick that with somebody that needs that design.
Yeah. Well, it does not commit itself. We'll do that.
No, the actual subject may be.
That's. I put Clark for the t-shirts there.
It's not on.
Yeah, he's a good buddy. Yeah.
All right.
Okay, good job. So we need to, you guys want a joint meeting? John?
CEO, you need a motion to adjourn your joint meeting?
Do I hear a motion on the table to adjourn the Village of Marvin Parks Recreation and Greenway meeting here on July 28th at 10:11 a.m.?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
I'm aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Who's ready to start?
I found that thing.
Yeah.
You need a designated burger flipper because I won't be there.
I'm happy to, I'll be there. Derek is 22.
I like this.
That's very efficient. Good job. I mean, you can do anything. You're sitting over there, I'm not even trying. I was like, I see that.
Right. Moving on.
We tabled it.
Right into the discussion. Discussion, general obligation, bonds for roads.
It is. Wait, or are you going to hook this all up?
No, I'll come.
We're moving on.
So a few months back, we talked about roads and we talked about power revenues, expenditures. Main thing was the sheet that you see right here. Sorry, attached all this other document to the agenda. This is the main sheet that we're going to look at. This kind of drove the conversation in terms of the vehicle use tax and kind of where we're going with power dollars. There was some concern when we saw negative numbers starting in '22, '23, moving over to basically '24, '25, where you see major.
Okay, what?
Major drops in our balance account. We've got a negative $683,000. Again, these are not, these are roll forwards. So it's not every year we're going to see that same deficit. It's a roll forward from the previous year. So starting with the major year of '24, '25, we see that big hit of $683,000. The reason it's so much is you see that stiff match three lines above there, $524,000. That's the program for the sidewalk, the Loop Project that we're adding on to when we got the $1.27 million grant. So this is money that we were taking out of power bill and that's where you start seeing some of those major chunks of money coming out when we run into a deficit. This is what drove a lot of conversations about geo-bonds and what to do with power bill funding and how to fund roads. So from there, Kent wanted to discuss amongst themselves and myself, the idea of going out for a bond to see if the voters were approved, us to take over all roads at one time and fixing the models our standards at that time. Approximately have 16 miles under the village roadway system today with another 16-ish left. So we basically had 50% of the roads. That 16 number that remains does not include any connected roads. That number's not including Newtown Road, Martin School Road, none of the DHT connected roads. It's only residential. So I met with you all individually and talked about geo-bonds to see where you are in terms of if you're interested in doing that. We would not go out for a referendum until November of '23. So between now and then, there's a lot of work. We would have to determine to define the scope of work, meaning what roads are we going to take over, what connected roads are we going to take over? Are we going to add ancillary things like sidewalks, curb and gutter? What else do we want to add to that question of going out for geo-bonds? Kent, I remember Deffridge and I met with a financial advisor from the first, no, fifth third, who's willing to do some of the preliminary work for us for free. That basically means coming up with a number in which we would have to increase our taxes so we can form a referendum question. Once we define the scope of work, meaning the roads, the ancillary things like sidewalks, we determine the number, the project cost based off of engineer drawn estimates. From there, we will be able to have a discussion in here to determine what tax increases would be needed for how many years to pay for the scope of that work. So that means that I want to make sure everyone understood the process, which we all individually had a conversation. It does mean a tax increase at some point in time, but it would be voter approved tax increase if that, you know, that passes the referendum. So moving forward, we would need to work an agreement with DOT to make the less, the most, less impact of tax increase possible. We would need to go ahead and define the scope of work with engineer help. Then we need to go ahead and start conversations with our financial advisors. So don't know if you want to have some conversation amongst yourself. The first step in this process would be to go ahead and procure the pavement condition survey, which is in your agenda packet today. We need to do it at some point in time anyway. So it's not going to be a major cause to the village for exploring the cost of taking over the roads because we do this every roughly five years. And the one that we've got right now was, was last year, '18. So we're pushing that five-year bound.
So I was reviewing the letter. So if I go back. So if I go back, the number of years when I approached DOT with the suggestion that we should be doing it in today's, how much was inflation, whatever, costs always going up, it fell on deaf ears. Well, now, being in CRTPO, they're telling us, you communities need to figure out how to be creative. What I looked at, and I said, well, if you want us to be creative, then you need us, you need to partner up with us. So some of these costs that are going to happen, it's a risk, because at the end of the day, it still has to go to vote to be approved, correct? Right, so, but there's a lot of labor that's done and costs that are done. So I would say, as a council, you want us, as a DOT, to be creative. As a council, we are being creative by providing a potential bond, but there's all this work that we don't know what's going to happen. Are you willing to share the costs of getting this road prep and helping us with that? It would be my initial thought, because otherwise, we're putting everything out there and spending our own money and we don't know what's going to happen. And with that, with that, I would bet that DOT would get behind some sort of campaign to promote getting this thing done as a bond when it comes to the budget. Whether they promote it in a local aid or however they do that, but they're asking us now to be creative. We're doing it because we want to save the village money, because we're on the hook. But I would argue, and correct me if I'm wrong, anytime you talk to a constituent in Marvin, what's the biggest issue? Cars, and it's traffic, it's roads, and it's, when is that going to happen? So that all kinds of ties into it. But getting the roads doesn't ever more pain in tax and then we're getting equal treatment, I think is important. And when people see it that way, I just, I would want to go back and maybe in the next CRTPO meeting, it comes up that we sit down and say, or pull some of these DOT guys there and say, you mentioned you want us to be creative. Here's how we're going to be creative. How are you going to help us from a financial one? Because if we do this, it's going to cost us projected whatever it is. It makes sense. Well, like, here's the issue. They have, they have to buy it. If we are buying it, we're coming to the table. They can't come to the table, it's convenient for them to want to discover. Because what, when you start talking about constituents, we keep telling what they tell us and they, they move the goalpost. And then where's the blood, where's the blood, where's the blood? It goes over our face, not theirs. And we can say it, we can say it all day, but they gotta go, okay, you know what, we're Marvin, we are going to commit. If you're going to do this, then we'll commit to you that whatever they say, we're going to stick to that. Because, you know, when you go to CRTPO, when you go to these meetings, you get people that are getting stuff done. Somehow, they are forcing DOT to commit to doing it and not that.
And DOT doesn't like it.
And they don't like it, but again. But that, that would help and say, look, we're willing to do this, but you need to help us with that, because we're going to put this out there, but not only commit it financially, but commit it for the campaign. Because this, this is going to be a campaign that we're going to promote on the website saying, look, we want these roads on, we want everyone to say, let's do it today's dollars, whatever it is. Here's where I'm really, really, I just want to throw this out there. Caution, 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 because if we do this, we go through this process and then five years down the road, we need, something comes up that's DOT or state related, just to do a bond, or, you know. If there's, there's no, if there isn't, and we created another monster out there that's like, oh, we're not going to get, Marvin's going to do. And that could happen with other communities as well, then we're putting ourselves out there anytime we want something done. We have to take action and put the risk out. Panel, would you say, okay? To me, the risk, the risk comes in partnering with someone who changes their mind every day. That's what risk is. Well, because you gotta remember, all we're doing is saying, hey, constituents, when you come next November, you're going to vote. If our constituents say yes, DOT, you can back out of it. Because we've committed the campaign, we've committed to put it out for our constituents, our constituents said yes, and then you go, no, you know what, we're going to back out and we're going to push it back three years. We want, we're going to do it. So, money? Oh, we, what do we do? But in the end, the bond is not, in the end, the bond is, is, is there to get the work down to today's dollars. But it's also still their responsibility to pay us back.
Well, and, and. That's, that's a conversation that we have with DOT.
So.
Right.
It is, and that's where we need, the precursor to all of this is to kind of do some things simultaneously. That's where we need to get a core group of myself and probably two of you all to have some real serious conversations with DOT about what, about what that means. Are they willing to enter an agreement with us for ten years? Or however long we define it as acceptable to repay us back at a cost at today's dollars? And if so, what does that look like? And then we have to go through legal.
And the penalties and interests or whatever, I mean, if they don't hand back, because that's what I think we were told at the Luma meeting, Andy, if you were there, that stopping strategy, something like this.
Yeah, yeah.
And they just backed it up.
But that's what they were told at Luma, and I asked all of you about it. I don't think it's like, I've never happened to their attorney, so.
Well, so let's be more about the process. So if it's not us, then Marvin will do it. It's Todd, it's David, it's a collaborative group of people goes to DOT, goes, and they're saying, oh, you know what, that one, we're going to stay, it's going to, we're going to have to stand tall on you, because you're committed to two of you. So it's not just us, it's David, it's Todd. Whoever else, you can, I don't care what it is, we go as a group and say, okay, now let's have a little conversation.
So is it asking them to, one, allow us to enter some of these kind of roads? Because they definitely, definitely have pushed back on that. So that's one question. Number two question is, now I'm asking you, I'm not saying, I'm asking you. Is normally when we go into a neighborhood, we, we go in with DOT and there's a cost sharing and DOT is putting the majority of it in. So the question is, okay, DOT, we know how much you spent to repay Fire Farm. We know how much we spent to repay Fire Farm. Are you willing, whatever that percentage is, are you willing to do that for the rest of Marvin? We'll pay for it now, but over the next ten years, you will pay us back for that percentage. Is that what we're asking them?
I, I think that's what we're trying to do, because it is in our roads and we would ask that in the process of giving the rest of the fourteen miles in exactly, get it right, and then we will take.
Within that, okay, so that's, so that's the question. So we want to make sure we can get the connected roads. Question, yes or no? I want the connected roads. Because, because I actually think it's going to do anything. Now, third question is, if we take connected roads, i.e., we'll say we'll take Marvin Road, for example, we've got that quarter of Marvin and Joe Bar, and we know that's on the federal, whatever, crazy intersection list. If we take that over, is that considered as not on that federal list anymore? And we shot ourselves in the foot of getting federal funds for that?
Those are questions.
I know, this is what I'm asking. And these are things we need to be asking DOT. We need to ask your, we need to ask Hunter, because he can talk in, I guess, to your about that this critical intersection list.
That's something we would have to put in the agreement. Is if it's, if it's our roads, it's our responsibility here unless we can get those future projects.
But that's what I'm saying, I don't, we do that. Again, also, quarter of Yssom Marvin and Bob's Road. Like, we already know, because like, how far up are we going to go? Are we going to go, like, because one quarter of that is Marvin and the other is unincorporated in Yssom, I think.
Well, that, so a lot of those specific questions and those specific connected roads, we're going to need to have a real defined work session meeting with you all, because there's going to be a lot of things that we're not even talking about, like the cost of roundabouts and maintenance of those. So we would basically need to define, if we're talking about connected roads, what exact connected roads, to where, from where to where are we going to take over roundabouts? Because DOT is not going to allow us to take over Marvin School Road and then leave one half of roundabout.
All right, yeah. But I'm asking, I'm asking, do we want connected roads? Do we want roundabouts? I, my answer is yes.
Okay, I have a, I have a question for you on the roundabouts. And this is something that we need to consider as well. When the two roundabouts were built, DOT acquired a good bit of extra property on the edges with the intent that as traffic got to be too much, they would put in a second lane through both roundabouts. That, the land acquisition's already been done, but the construction of those lanes is wanting to be very costly. And if we were to take over those, we'd be on the hook for that expansion at some point whenever we get overrun with traffic. Now, I have no appetite for being overrun by traffic through those areas. And if, if we can at all keep it from happening, that would be great. But as we all know, doesn't seem to be slowing down at any point. So that's, that's a concern of mine is, you know, as much as I would want to have it for or controlled by the village, these are some pretty expensive upgrades. Like you mentioned, the, the other one, the potential traffic circle. You know, what is, what are all the ramifications if we do this? We go down this road?
Yeah, no, I think they're really good points. And I think that as we talk to DOT, there's things that we need to talk about. We need to ask, we need to just kind of find out, like, are these, you know, should we put this stuff in the inventory? Like, you can start paying us back at whatever point if we start coming up with money. But we take into consideration the expansions of those roundabouts when we're going out for the bond. We absolutely take that into consideration and find out how much that would cost. And, and hopefully, if we do take over Newtown Road, we can slow it down. We can be enough just to go through there. And we can get eighteen wheelers off, so maybe we push out the expansion of that, you know, instead of ten years, it's fifteen years.
And the only thing I would say is, is say, we're going to imagine a lot of talking and places and stuff, and we're putting out tax increases for the town to pay for the bond. And then once that bond's over, you know, a lot of times with governments, you have an increased tax that, that tax never goes away. You find another thing, but let's say, over the, what? Yeah, but as we get it back, my thought would be that those funds will be directed to the maintenance of the roads going forward. So we don't ever have to come back and, and taxes. If we're going to get paid annually over ten years, those funds can be sort of like hourly funds that could be used for the maintenance of roads going forward. Just as.
And also, once we start getting paid back, then we will get reducing the tax rate. Like, as we just want to pay back the, the GO.
So if everyone's in agreement, we're moving forward with this process, what we would do is try to find a couple of you that can start the conversations with DOT and, you know, lobbying our legislators at that point. We, at the staff level, will consult with AMT to get them to help us define the scope of work so we can get a little bit more specific on the scope of work cost.
I mean, I think it was, it was on CRTPO with you. I mean, I think one of you.
I'll reach out to Jeremy, which is back on the air, and say, if this bond we tend to, at some point, should.
But I would, no, I would say, I would, I would agree back to CRTPO. Like, we need to start having conversations with DOT. CRTPO is something that we want to.
Yeah. Well, then I can agree, though, we can bring it up where other communities are here and they say, wow, Marvin's already taking the lead on this. And is there a way? Again, power numbers, you got ten communities there that are, ah. But that's, but would, the key is, is DOT to commit to.
Do you want, I think, one, one of these stages that they're considering.
So I'll, I'll reach out to DOT, try to get the meeting started from, from a more local level, yeah. And then from there, we can go to.
It's just simple to be, obviously, if you have that meeting or set it up if anyone else wants to.
Well, I'll say, who wants to? Yeah, it, it doesn't matter, anyone of them is fine. Unless you feel like that's what. Perfect, go ahead. So I'll, I'll look at, and it's going to be, it's going to be a slow process. It's going to be long, but we'll, we'll get these guys a little bit and whoever a plan to help define the scope of work. Because it's going to be probably a work session that we're going to have, kind of have years.
Four, seven.
That's, that's. And we're going to keep you before we, if there, and start looking into committee numbers.
Yes.
Double digits, and then they can start working.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
That's all, that's all.
Andy, you got it? Parkus?
Yeah.
Um, we're moving on. Okay, the only question, some of that point I will ask you, but the yellow and red and all this stuff.
Yes, Justin's will be in there. It's, it's.
Okay, I was confused.
It's a, it's a, a page that's, that populates some of the ones on the P C W page, and it's, it's irrelevant, so disregard that.
Moving on, discussion of entering agreement with AMT Engineer to conduct pavement conditions survey.
So per our road policy, roads have this policy. We do this every three, seven years, or thirty-five years apart. And that policy is in your agenda packet. We are moving into the fifth year. We actually, the, the data that's obtained from this study is under twenty-eighteen, if I remember correctly. So we are moving into the fifth year. And so we're asking for that pavement conditions survey to be done. And that does include thirty miles in the village, so that includes the sixteen miles that I mentioned for DOT roads. It does not include the connected roads. But that's something that we probably will get engineer added here. So I'd like to see additional that we have in our doors. Okay.
Okay, what do you need to show, Eric?
I want to understand, I don't know whether there's possible change.
Okay, good comment.
I can't really hear what she said.
We're going to talk to AMT about adding the connected roads into this quote. And AMT is here.
I agree with that.
And AMT is here, makes it they don't see the quote changing.
They believe all of the geo-bonds, we need them.
Yeah, so, but AMT is here, makes it they don't see it being that much more to add a connected roads, because there aren't that many connected roads.
Okay, yeah, we need the information, the recommendation, how we're going. Before we get along on that, so.
Yeah, so we're not asking any action today. I think that the consent agenda, so as long as there's not substantial changes, how can we consult and how should we consent agenda for the next meeting? Or unless there's objections? Nope. It needs to be done, I mean, it's time work to be done. We have like seventy-seven, almost five years. And hopefully, we'll, you know, start making it go.
The last time we did this, we also included N C writing in there. Do you want to include that as well?
So you see any houses there in there?
Uh-huh, any houses on the road.
I don't care, because we are not picking the roads. They are for the ones that are under that, so I don't care.
Okay, cool, cool, yeah. I don't have any more.
Okay.
Any other questions? Moving on, discussion of entering agreement with AMT Engineer to conduct drainage treatment survey.
So this is another type of survey, just as the pavement conditions survey, but it is only for the stormwater drainage systems that are under the roads. Since we've taken over the roads, we don't actually have an inventory of what's under these roads. So we don't, we've just been addressing problems as they come about. And usually, we handle them as emergency repair. And I don't know if y'all want to start some type of survey that exists where we know what's under there, we know what we're going, we know where potential failures may happen in years, you know, one to five, and then where we have potential issues of clogging, that sort of thing. I don't know, I have the commentary, if they're okay with me speaking. But that's kind of what we're looking at on this survey. It's approximately thirty thousand dollars to do the survey. And that is for thirty miles. That does include what's under D O T roads as well. That does include what's under DOT roads as well. This is probably something that we would want to at least know in terms of the geo bonds or the failures are from DOT's roads at least. But if we're not interested in geo bond, we may not want to do DOT programs. So it's really a discussion for you guys to act, willing to draw the dice and continue to address things as they come about as emergency repair, or if you want to know what we're working on.
Well, if something worked, I would, by a decision, I would, so y'all just, because you either did want to, or you just didn't care. So I would say that's why we're going through all this, that we started to do absolutely well.
So I have a question, which Mary Jo and I both have a wonderful relationship with on this regard, that Innisbrook, the stormwater, did it back in 19, 2020, Innisbrook stormwater drainage comes onto my property and has flooded the property. An entire stormwater drainage went under the road and went onto my property. So I've had to spend about $20,000 to keep the water from flooding. The driveway, house, and all that kind of stuff coming in, because Jo's familiar with this. So this, if this was in the survey, who's responsible and to pay, you know, who's paid for the repairs? Us?
It would, that would be DOT, because that's DOT water.
So if we brought it to there, because we've had DOT to the house and them saying.
But this has, this is only going to identify failures. It's not going to identify where you've got outflows that are large and are dark and channel. That's, that's really private property issue. That's between your property, whoever owns your property, and the person who's producing the water. So that, that would be a simple issue that we would not get involved with. We would only handle some type of failure, bad, you know, plug, pipe, a broken pipe that may be replaced.
But to the point, when the issue came up, is this was approved through county or state or whatever, and because of the volume, it has created the issue of down, you know, down, downhill. So how is that? It's still a private.
That is, that is not what we're, that's not what we're assessing. The survey is going to be literally if a stormwater culvert fails, collapses, falls in on itself, there's missing grade, there's blocking, or there's joint there. It has nothing to do with rare water damage. None of it's linked to that.
Right. It is 100% right. That was the thing the town is doing, we're working there, the, the, that, that decision of the owner came in and had, and, you know, they're looking at all of the potential road, how they're going to redirect stormwater, all of that. That's quite a litmus that. And that's why I made a comment at that meeting, that they need to also have a plan for fixing what's already a problem. That was their biggest flaw, that whole plan. I'm ready for the future, but they need to figure out what they're, we're really gone wrong in how to fix that stuff, because there are a whole lot of great problems within there.
Yeah. I'm going to ask the council, if they're okay with A M T speaking, if they have anything to comment on, if that's all right. Do you have any?
I'm good with it.
Do you think, so please, some of your truth before recording this, making here.
And, yeah.
Andy, on to your speaker.
Yeah, that's it. Well, just our, our understanding of what the town wanted was specifically for like planted drainage systems within the subdivisions. Like, when I was looking at this, I wasn't necessarily thinking about the accident in the 44th, all across from the ice on my border.
Now, we have to do that.
And that's a good thing to happen. And I'm not sure, you know, how a cross can change as a result of that. This was like focused, like surveying where the drainage systems were planted throughout the subdivision, to take note, no taxes, any issues that we found with that.
And, and I, I think I remember that specifically, because we had an issue in what it can change when we had a reported drop, drop in, like it was converted, but we were unaware that it was under our basement, some run, our label has gotten involved, and we've kind of pushed that to be on the property owner, not to assume that we have an impact just because it's on a reported flat. So I think the scope of that is no longer necessary due to what our attorney's figured out. We may want to change that a little bit in terms of if they want to move forward with what we're talking about and identify those failures. But can you speak to this question about the, the flow volumes and how a survey of failures doesn't address that type of issue?
Right. You know, I mean, I guess if we find an issue, a failure of some type, you know, we're going to look, like if it's a 18-inch pipe and it's, it's failed, you know, we're going to look and see if that's a, if the pipe is too small, you know, if that's, you know, if there's scouring that's creating issues, you know, we would look at the pipe size at that time to try to decide what the solution is.
But it, it doesn't, I know, I know we're making speculation here. His situation doesn't sound like a failure, it sounds like too much volume coming over on one side and another. So that's not an area where he would identify a solution based off the volume alone, you're only looking at failures, correct? Does that answer your question, or no? We, we wouldn't do anything to address volume in this study. We would only look at failures of the system and how to address it. So if there's a failure, if he's identified a failure, maybe the pipe's collapsed, or it's getting very collapsed, it's too.
It sometimes assumes to be, you know, eventually, if there's a volume issue, it's going to be.
I just think, I just think it, it, whenever it went in and was a design failure, was what the world was anybody thinking to put in a 30-inch pipe coming straight onto my property? And I've had to divert water to keep from flooding the property. So when the world designed that, I mean, we thought that was good idea. Talking to the neighbor across the street, they were going to put it on their side. And they, they went out and called the people and said, no, 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 don't you do that, put it over there, which I didn't listen at the time.
I just don't want anyone to, to think, to, to address volume issues. So what, what A M T and I can do is talk more in detail about what we think we're going to do in the report in terms of now that we have this geo bond and getting revises, will that be something?
To change this point, for us, this role, I don't like that term, I'd rather say, yeah, no, we are interested in the opinion of one, we are interested, we do want to know.
I can't hear anything.
Sorry, I, I did want to say, we are interested in what that potential could be as far as the risk potential financially, and, and maybe we can create, like we did with this building, some sort of funding we set aside every year for those changes.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk. I don't think I want to.
You don't want to?
I don't know. That's not, I don't mean to do what that person is, I just want to address that if this comes up and deal with it when we have an issue, but they've done it, and I want to sit $30,000 on that, especially when some of the DOT breaks, and we're just going to go to DOT, if you got to make this, then we'll get to it.
So we're going, when you, when you.
That's my thing.
When you stepped out for a second, we've had a discussion about the scope of work on here, and they were, this was a little different than what we're talking about.
Okay.
So we're going to have a conversation to revise this. It may not be $30,000, maybe something completely different. We're going to bring it back to y'all at the next meeting, we'll talk about this as we're done, and we'll go into that in more detail later. What, Andy, do you have any other questions to then?
Andy, any questions for A M T?
Fairly adequate in that, but video can skip it, I can't hear anything. Oh, my God, what? Initial of the drainage or planning feature issues, I don't like surprises, but beyond
All right, first. You're breaking up a lot, Andy, and I think we got the gist of it.
You don't want any surprises.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm on your feet here. I'm on my private.
You got a little acting in this question. All right, moving forward. Discussion at Village Hall Tree Meeting and Feedback from Union County Urban Forester. This is not me. I know. Where do you go?
I'll come to the line. Top off. This, this was a follow-up to the quote that I brought to you guys in our last meeting from Schneider Tree Care, who provided a quote to me. You were asked if you could go back to Union County Urban Forester for his feedback on it. So I'm just going to root to exactly what he said. Derek, from Chris Green and Schneider Tree Care, the nutrient application listed on this quote refers to deep wood injection, which is the perfect remedy to punch holes in a clay or a can without being as disruptive as tilling or other means. I appreciate that synthetic fertilizer is a minimal component of the material being injected by Schneider. Instead, they focus on beneficial bacteria and fungi to improve soil health. I would suggest negotiating for a grid pattern of 18 inches by 18 inches with a 35-inch radius of tree trunk to maximize the number of holes created. The monthly sprays will prevent amroge beetle are important for oak trees that have incurred stress, especially high-profile trees, and I do not feel like this is overkill. The quote from Schneider, if you jump to applying hard robochips and mulch-like amount of organic compost and some supplemental water would be an excellent post-instruction treatment for all these large oats.
So you think that they were developed towards this?
Correct. He said, then he summarized it back into, you know, a person that had said, to be clear, after speaking with Chris Green and Schneider, I recommend the entirety of that quote plus mulch-like organic compost and supplemental water. And just please let me know if you have any further questions.
And I had a conversation with Keith myself at this point, and this is exactly what he might discuss. And he said, you're reaching for those people to be good as well. But I agree with him that you can't go to Rice Town and use maintenance crews, and we need to take care of, they're going to have accidents. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you.
You just agreed with whatever Eric just said nicely.
Basically, yeah.
Cool. Uh, top five. You want to, you're not going to consent, you don't want to.
Yeah, you don't want to consent. All right.
Thank you, Eric.
Moving on, consider funding request from the Union County Library Foundation, you see, now let the direct staff to amend the outside funding policy. I think we do have a policy on, I thought that was for more refreshment memory, but for like voice outs of that one year where you guys were all here, we got, we were approached by a group that was looking to get the reach we did at the time back then, but it was for, it was almost for the arts, theater, stuff like that that we did at one point, and then we, I think, changed the policy, so.
We did, because we asked C W A to come in and access money, and it said, outside funding policy, we need the top doors.
So do we, do we view, I guess, a question, do we view the outside, the outside funding as, do we view Union County Public Library as, as we do W C W?
The purpose of the policy.
So, policy on the map here, and I just wanted to say what it says, because I have a policy for the village department who provide a fund to not profit with their party, sorry, with their corporate organizations. Do you want to raise?
Yeah, yeah, I'm ready for it fast, so I don't.
It's, it's in, it's in the bottom of the, in our corporate organization.
It's right on the back of the, that I wrote. So I just want to go through the library faculty from us. So on our special 2/30 of, the Union County Library Commission presented, and they asked the department of park management in their panel committee for the, they used to have Black Mountain Library, the library located in Union County, on a government property with a name for each town center, five towns located in that region of Union County. So they, the library management asked the department for a budget of $50,000 to look at the approval of the year via a July 21 grant. So I just did a breakdown of the three years' failures that I can, I just divided evenly, so we can obviously give it more, if that's what you want to do. I have a packet for each person who are older. There's also a meeting opportunity, and they have, they're dedicated ways that we can work with them and design, like they presented to us. But we do have a place of policy that doesn't allow us to run into non-profit or corporate organizations. So we would need to amend that in order to get a funding to sign. Thank you.
Any thoughts for the council?
Well, I, from my point, I would feel like, actually, I'm not supporting the library, but I also understand our policy is that we're just not trying to give away money to everybody that comes along, got a pipe. So the policy that you have placed is very broad, I guess you could say, that says absolutely nothing. I would be okay to consider amending it to allow for certain things besides this. I mean, it'd be, I, I think it just, we need to figure out some way to deal with it, for my side.
Given that we sit on a, they don't have a meeting this month, but I'd be curious to see how other communities are approaching this, because I know, obviously, the library started reaching out to them too. We all have policies. No, I'm certainly open to it, we're figuring out ways, as we talked earlier in the day, I think, the meeting about how to somehow get funding from Marvin Day and redirect that money, where it's more, it's not like a tax taxpayer dollar that we're taking. I think the whole reason it came with this policy is because it was a committee of council and, you know, a town taking tax dollars that are already paid for whatever we need to do, and redirecting it to other events. That was the main issue, and that was why we went with this, because it was, I think the thought was it wasn't our right to take taxpayer dollars.
Well, I decided, which my profit, forget it, which their partner forgets. I'm an action, I'm on the library, I'd love to have a nice library closer to us, but I don't think that we have a policy in place for this specific, because how do we think to choose? How do we say, oh, yes, this is, this is a good cause? Well, then, you know, we're asking to stay on, and I'm like, no, sorry. I think it's true, that's right. I would be more available to something with Marvin Day that says, hey, you know, half the 5K proceeds are going to go to the library, and they get some funding that way. But we have an outside funding policy that we're going to assess, and we're reaching for that. I mean, Joe said it perfectly, so I, I just, I'd love to find another way to be able to help the library, but not with the nation. So I, I just, I'd love to find another way to be able to help the library, but not with location.
I was also thinking, maybe, I agree with your comment, or what, what Wednesday, what the chapel mineral springs wax hall are also doing, if you're interested in that too. Um, I know that we're the new town, but they're trying to serve us with the library. So it would be interesting to see what Wednesday, what the chapel mineral spring are all doing.
How much, okay, there's usually action, okay? Oh, how, Jamie comes with five K, how much did we make from that?
Um, we didn't have, I don't think we made a lot of money at all. We, we paid for the five K and T-shirts, and it wasn't a big money either. Because we had the hundred and some runners.
Mark, what was the worst you could sell?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I know probably the decision you want this, but we have, we have a policy in place for this reason. And, and I would, in my way, say, this is not profitable, and that's not.
And, and that's, that's, that was the process of everything, but why are we gonna do that? Obviously, because we just couldn't say, okay, how do, how do we make a choose? Letting go to the point, okay? We certainly have that priority, yeah, much of it, for us, and so, and again, it's, gotta remember, it's some people's money. But, um, I, I think as we grow with the five K, um, there are a lot of five Ks out there that are truly fundraisers. And if we can kind of promote it to, hey, um, we're gonna pay our costs to do this, but keep in mind that any excess from the five K, or whatever it is that we need to decide on, is directed to that, I don't pay it. Because I don't think this is, this should become a moneymaker, Marvin should be a moneymaker. Marvin, we're trying to redirect it to local things that we can do. I mean, and goes to donations that we get from vendors. Again, we're not using taxpayer money, but any, any proceeds are, are still funded. Um, I mean, I would kind of probably take any extra couple thousand dollars that was left over. Uh, if, if we find ourselves every year and saying, okay, we're gonna direct that to, uh, you know, the, the town, but it goes back to, okay, why are you making that versus somebody else? So it's, it's, go ahead.
I don't, you have door scouts and whatever, but I think the library is a big part of the community and, you, but it's got in the community. It's a large community, five areas or six towns, six, but, well, what, ninety-seven thousand out here for cops, control area, because of our commitment to the community as a whole, not just Marvin, but everybody that comes to this.
That's safe, I mean, that's, that's totally, in my opinion, that's totally different from state. I mean, we're really not the same, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't, and, and, I mean, kids don't use libraries very often. My son, I don't think he went to the library, I mean, they don't have libraries until he's little. But, um, I, I just don't think you can choose what you do. Yes, it is in the community, but it's not, it's not in Marvin.
And since the county's responsible, or really responsible, it's the county's, or we all be into that. It's that county, or the county that chooses. Other comments?
If I want to take anything on your next group.
That's not a tier front, here, the council library, yes, please.
So, Jamie, can you not say, you must get, you can't even talk about, about how other towns can fund the library? So the city of Monroe gives money to the Lundy Library in Monroe, and it's only a county. It's agency to agency, it doesn't have anything to do with the foundation. So that's the name of the road, it's not a county. So you don't necessarily have to look at it and suggest support your foundation, but if you give the money to the foundation, then you have the naming rights, you have all those perks that come with the funding, if that makes sense. But you can still support a government entity to a government entity. And that's what the library needs to do. So I understand what you're saying about your policy and not wanting to change it, because at what point do you determine which is not profitable to support, which one do you not? I completely understand that. But I just wanted to mention that, you know, that we still are a department of county government, which means that we're still a department of government as well, so.
But I think you should know the county, but, I mean, if it's a county function, then, I mean, the county should be homing up on that.
Hayaw, hayaw.
And, but, but there are multiple neighborhoods in this area that are unincorporated in the county that will be accessed or set up. So they're being, you know, we're using our community's taxpayer dollars and supporting it like other people who aren't coming up for that. And, and again, to me, we have a policy in place that we just don't do outside.
Can you hear me, you're saying, you're starting?
We, we have a policy in place, but we just, we don't, we don't have outside funding opportunities. I mean, I'm, again, I'm happy if we try to do some sort of slum breaker, but it's hundreds of our taxpayer dollars for me, and I, I mean, I would never make a name right. Like, if I wanted to contribute, and I want my name on something, but I would never to contribute Marvin's money to Marvin's money, ever. That's, that's my opinion, like.
It's just from a, for me, uh, say, I think you're an elected official, and you're responsible for the town funds, and it's our, our little world, and we're expanding that world as it grows and stuff like that. But it's, it's huge responsibility. I, 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 again, we had a policy made because of these issues we were getting, uh, inundated by a number of different, and, and issues. But at the end of the day, I would, I would get, I would strongly get behind as we grow and evolve it. And that's not in three years, that's in perpetuity, because I can see us, um, you know, saying, hey, it's all going back, any proceeds is all going back to the community and the extent of the community as well.
Well, I was just about to start here. This is the quadrant that we're in, unfortunately, because I'm, I'm all for the Marvin Day taking those funds. But again, this to me is a county issue, and here you are. Because again, as a resident Marvin, I'm not, I'm looking at it going, okay, I'm giving my money, we're talking about tax increases, and we, we increase taxes both in multiple reasons. But you have people that are sitting over here, and going, you know what? Love me, Marvin, love for the library coming in, love for all this other stuff coming in. It's my thing, and they're right across the street. So, I'm all for, I don't, I don't love having my stock there, because please don't misunderstand. I don't love having my stock, I love my stock there. That, to me, should come from the county. The county wants to raise the taxes there, because it touches everyone. So the county wants to raise the taxes on all of us, to include people right across the street, that, you know what? We are giving unincorporated Union County every reason not to join Marvin. I'm the report, I'm not doing Marvin, I didn't need Marvin. I mean, all things, these crazy people in Marvin, they tell you, Marvin, love.
What, the BFO system, direct traffic for the majority?
Right, and that's why, that's why I wanted to vote that on, have it off, you know? Because I'm trying, if, as a citizen of Marvin, I'm trying to make everyone's, we are giving everyone that's not in Marvin, is an unincorporated Marvin, is not. And again, I'm not, I'm just, I think, I think it breaks, because what more access point for everyone in this area? Do you come in, I feel, we do, like, everything to, as you will, right, we can, I would love to support you. I would personally give, you know, donations towards, and do stuff. But I have my responsibilities, and I'm speaking to me individually, is to take care of people Marvin. And I feel as though, if I'm taking their money and doing it to all these different things, I promote unincorporated, say, I appreciate that I've got people in the city right across the street to go, you know what, keep straight and plodding, keep straight and Marvin presence, I mean, you know? You know what, we'll never, I mean, just, you're taking care of us, just because we, we got a government, we're a citizen of, as state, I, I, you know, what, maybe, from, I look at, what I look at, services that, that provide, promote to the, the general, the entire one-hundred percent of the public. So as a citizen, whatever, I pay taxes, I pay taxes equally for the people that are up here that's saving, that count, and so, and I hate it, because I hate that they should move, and people will be said that somehow, some way, but, um, I don't want to be counted, so. Because listen, we don't have, unfortunately, we have a good driver, who's been kept there, they're trying to live. They go, oh, gosh, you love that, man, just typically, and, and you, you know, you're probably wondering the same thing, but sometimes, nothing's gonna get done with the current conditions. Not what it's, you know, for what, if you enjoy, uh, we're, we're often kind of, taxes yourself, and it may be.
Wayne, Ed, Tom?
Um, all three of you said, okay, there's nothing more for me to say, because, you know, it's a policy we've had in place for the reasons, and Jamie, I love the way you expressed it, you know? It's, you get tired of, of funding everybody else. I mean, I'm still mad about the roads, and, and why, you know, we don't let the state take care of it, and why we're doing what we're doing. So it hits, it's what it is. I mean, the policy is here for a reason and a place, and, uh, so I, I, I can agree with, with all three of you.
So do we need to take a vote on this, or, or whatever?
Sandy is requesting, yeah, a consensus on canceling the order to amend the policy in what we're doing, so we're gonna start with agenda, but if, if there's a, it's not a legal team, it's, it does.
But, I mean, I, I would say this, again, in one, I would commit, whether it be somewhat on a personal level, to help out whatever I can do on a personal level, but also to, uh, taking Marvin Day, and are we okay with that? Is that overstepping what, like?
No, because you're advertising it, you're saying, hey, anyone sign up for the five K?
Yeah, it's no, it's not taxpayer related, and that's where we can get on the.
Yeah, and that, I agree with that. I, I'd say, this is a worthwhile cause. I mean, this is an extremely worthwhile cause, and, and everybody would contribute to help this cause, you know? But again, it's coming to, to our arena.
Yeah, I, I, I love, I love saying, when we did Marvin Day, and I was actually on a little blurb on TV, I said, I pointed out that none of this was taxpayer dollars, that what we did for the community was taxpayer related, because that gets very, you know, it becomes a big issue when you're, you're, you're looking at what you're doing and how you're being the steward of taxpayer dollars. So that, that's where I'm coming from, from Sandy, and I, I'd like to continue that, but I'd like also to say, as a council, we've decided that those funds that we've come in that are taxpayer, non-related tax dollars can focus on, uh, community, things such as Marvin Reddysol, you know, or some of those, and maybe something else that's, that's community related that we can, you know?
Look, Christine, let me, let me, sir, the, the, just, the protocol, and refresh my memory, for us to, on our website, promote this, okay? So, you know, to Wayne's point, you know, this isn't, you know, this is something that's going to serve the communities at all. So can we do that? Can we put something and say, this is open, like, kind of help to let the community know that if you would like to do this on an individual basis?
We don't, we don't, my, I understand, we don't have a policy that says we can't do that. I mean, it's, we did, like, we said, yeah, it's really a job, you can play, so. Because, I mean, Jamie says, I got us enough money for this part, you know, we said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we'll have you to deliver it for you.
Well, we can also, as we talked about the Marvin Day, and what we were, we can also put this idea of this sponsorship, um, five K, um, or not sponsorship, but the, the five K maker to benefit to the library, and we can have them discuss that, you know, give the library about providing encouraging different strategies.
But it sounds like there's a, it says it's not, it changes long, it says.
That's not.
That's right, okay. And, uh, let's, let's leave that to the committees, working first, to kind of focus on what, how it is for other. Are you going to bring it to the board? When you go to. Yes, I have that, and also, um, got a CRTO about, the other thing I have on my notes is how we start having some, because I want, I want the A.T. to know, they can believe, um, assuming that like, against social, so there's a couple things, that's been one of them, trying to find out, trying to be policy. Hey, our, I think I said, the, 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 that's what they, they go on, uh, their, their. Um, all right, so we're, and do we have to decide anything on that? So, moving on, we're going to, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, next up, we have a discussion of library RFP application.
Um, this is me also, and I just wanted to give you all the update. Our deadline is about RFP, it's September first, I'm writing draft of it now, so I think we're writing it out in the next week or two. Um, that's what I'm looking at right now. On September thirteenth, the RFP commission, RFP map to us, and we will have RFP opening on September thirteenth in the afternoon. Um, just, I think we're in, I think, around three o'clock, so that'll be my hottest in RFP. So we are looking, I was at, and today's ready to send it out.
Good, good job, Jamie. These are all the online lines of students, and we're not failing by the state or anything, or it's just us playing, if you want to let down everyone, maybe those RFPs, I would go higher, we'll, after we go. Okay, good job.
Are we looking to put a bio break?
Sure.
A bio break?
I don't like that, it's a bio break there.
All right, let's take five, we says.
All's a favor.
All right.
We'll do that.
All right, uh, we're gonna convene that from our break here, and, uh, next up, we have a discussion of, hold on to board cases.
Um, hold on one second. Okay, so in your guys' agenda packet, I put together something quick for you. You've got a review of the decisions you made last time regarding the style, the location, the colors, and then below, I've got two, two depictions, uh, one of a two-door casing, one of a three-door, and below that are some possible dimensions with pricing.
Two-door casing, and one is three-door, three doors.
Well, some of them, some of, some of the three-door casings are the same size as the two-door casing, it's just a different configuration.
How many?
Two-door. So you're looking, I got you four options below, thirty-six by sixty, so three feet by five feet, four feet by.
Three feet by five feet.
I think that thirty-six by sixty, black is the best.
With, with, with two doors, I think.
Yeah, it's the three foot by five foot, black, it's the, the picture, the black one there.
You mean, you mean back, you mean back.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
I like the back. All right, anybody have a, any opposition?
You mean back, you mean back.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
I like the back. All right, anybody have any opposition to this?
Now, the only I suggest is we use the same shingles that we have on those.
Okay, cool.
Right, white, same shingles, and then with the black, it'll look really nice.
It'll pop.
Pop.
Yes.
You good?
I agree.
Okay. You need a motion for that?
Nope. So we're doing three feet by five feet.
Three feet by five feet in the back, with two doors.
Can't make a spelling mistake here, you'll get roasted for it. I'm good, thank you, guys.
All right, next up, we have, uh, consider adoption of closed session minutes from the six, seven, twenty-two council meeting.
That's fine.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion for taxes. Next up here, next up, we have consider a call for public hearing for reason of the two annex petition, wedding, and change properties to village, uh, Marvin, R E C issue.
On? On?
On August ninth at six P M.
At?
At village hall.
Okay.
Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yeah. What was there before?
Next.
Just assuming.
Oh, you have.
Okay, steps on here. Uh, next up, we have to call for a public hearing on August ninth at six P M in village hall, consideration of heritage at Marvin's subdivision, Marvin Heritage District, additional reason of submission. Further discussion?
The one thing I, I just want to add is that the applicants put together a binder, um, with the full site plans, the elevations, the school tax study, trans, all, everything that's required, and I'll have that for you guys early next week, um, just so you'll have, and if you guys want to review through it, it also includes, like, the development agreement and just previous potential, like, minutes and recommended conditions, recommendations from, uh, planning board, uh, guarantee.
But, but.
I'm not worried about, about this, and you've got, you've got people on there, and they're like, wow, you know, people, you know.
At the end of the day. At the end of the day, they have a chance to come to the public hearing.
The, the ordinance has already passed, they missed that opportunity, because they didn't show up at those public hearings or counseling, or those discussions were online, so.
It's the back of an L. All right.
But, yeah, I, I, most people are, like, most people that are asking questions, don't have a good one. So if you've got two people there, we have a time, and they're all twisted up, uh, better based on what's happening.
You still need a vote?
Who need a vote?
I'm already saying, if we were further discussing, if we're further discussing, we're further discussing, now we're back, can you say?
All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oh, just not making that up.
I did, okay. She almost came, she almost matured, she missed something, matured, she was right on the.
I'm gonna fix that, I'm gonna fix, fixing it probably after.
Next up, uh, discussion of agenda packet review and meeting plan.
All right, this is me, and this is meant with all kinds of love and being inclusive and loving everybody in here, but as we grow, and as we have lots more on our agenda, and we're trying to get lots more done, we as council, and some of us are trying to do that, others, some of us aren't, we need to make sure we are well prepared for meetings, the longer we need to be performing, and if you have questions, talk to Christina, and then she can, if she wants you to talk to somebody else, talk to somebody else. But just be prepared for meetings. And then these meetings, we don't necessarily need to reiterate, maybe, what Derek has said. Derek said, maybe, unless you don't agree with it, it doesn't need to be reiterated, unless you have a majority, because we need to keep these meetings moving, otherwise, I mean, you're supposed to be forty-five.
Just a minute.
Okay.
There's only one second here. I think that goes about seven.
Well, it does, but then we just agree with it, and you go from one point, and you don't have to say it then. Not everyone has to say something, feel like you're being included, unless you have something to say.
Oh, but it'd be nice to be on record and say, yeah, I agree.
We can say that, because I agree, but you don't need to be like, hey, you know, so, you know, boy, you just said about that, and then go through the whole.
She's really squeezing hard right now, just thinking, I know, and I'm like, ah. Yeah.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to keep us, keep us, keep us, keep us, and I'm trying to get something.
Can I ask a question?
Of course, and all of that.
So, so, for example, when we talked about the library, I totally agree with all three of you.
Yes, that's.
You said, you know, when you said to me, Bob, do I have to make a statement, or do I just go, agree, right? That's it?
Yeah, perfect.
Move on.
Ah, listen, no, we don't want to talk, we don't want to have, like, but getting, just pretty much like this, like, you can, you can.
Yeah. All right, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a discussion of meeting disruption protocol.
Oh, this is me too. Stop disrupting meetings, no. Okay, so we have, um, Christina's this letter from the Sheriff's Department, uh, maybe a month ago, a few weeks ago, and in reading it, I, and everybody's like, do you think someone's gonna have it? No, I don't think anything's gonna happen, but if we do have some sort of disruption in one, I don't even, I don't have at all to know in the proper protocols. One, to ensure the sheriff's department will send it if necessary, and two, we as council recover, and not get sued, or something like that, so. So if you guys haven't read this, read it, but I also have Christina print out what steps one, two, three, and four are, so that you can actually go through those, um, because there are certain things that need to be said, um.
So, I, I am all for this, however, I will tell you this right now, if you were a board member, that we didn't have the backing of the sheriff's department. They did not even, they said, no, we're not gonna get involved when we had the disruption a few years ago, and I need to commit this in a formal letter.
I feel this is, this is from the sheriff's department.
I know, but did you sign it?
Yes.
I don't see a symbol, we need to.
From their legal council, their legal council signed it.
Yeah, but that's, legal council can sign anything, how about the sheriff decided, that said, yes, we're gonna have our, because we support them, they need to support us in these very contentious moments that find us in positions where, um, we, we had, it just went on, it was ugly, you had the media here, and you had no control of it, because the, they, they basically told us before the meeting, we're not gonna get involved, which we set aside unless it gets essentially fine, you know? So that's, I, legally, tell me all they want, I need the sheriff and our officers to know that that's where they, we direct them, if there's a motion on the council to have something to prove, then they remove that.
The sheriff, is Tommy still here? Like, has Tommy basically agreed on this? Uh, okay, I'm in, all right. Do you want to, do you want to call Sheriff Kathy and be like, do you want to?
We'd like to decide whether it's, if there's, we, that's what we expect.
And, and if, and if it did not happen on July seventh, when we, they, you know, whatever that day was.
Yeah, and, yeah, okay.
That was it.
Yeah, no, it was the.
Put it right there, print it out, we're gonna read it out, so that you have it.
Just leave it.
I hate that, but I did want to, I asked Christina to, well, I think, what are you seeing right on?
Changeable. All right, anyone have any questions? All right, next up, we have a discussion consideration of alcohol trucks of village hall on September first, two thousand twenty-two, and to direct staff to obtain appropriate A D C from.
Same.
We don't want to talk about, it's just for that one day, and that's for the open house, just for the public that understands, that's why we're doing, we may have some wine, and it's just, don't make sense, just.
We are on here, but Christina, I was looking at it, I can talk off about it, I would announce, maybe we can, and I have some questions, you weren't here to talk off about it. This is all for renters, we're not renters. So do we stop the policy?
Yeah, there's nothing, it says we can, we just want to make sure it was, like, or does that just sign, affect the permanent, like, work and all that stuff?
I'll sign it. I don't want to.
So, so, so then, the, the purchase of the alcohol stuff, where is, where is that going?
Where we got that handled.
Okay, what's, okay, I, it's just, is that?
We're, we are not paying for alcohol.
Okay, that's, that's not, I don't think we are.
We are not paying for alcohol.
We're not paying, it would be, right, 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 that's, that's. Um.
They're ready for this?
Yeah.
Oh, here on, over here on. Amy, you want the airline?
Absolutely.
Okay, whatever.
All of them are on.
And is there any, again, between, sorry, gosh, is there any concern about someone maybe over served? Who, who, who steps in at that point, sitting there?
I would, oh, okay. What is that, what is that?
Uh, here's what I, here's what I think we should do, and I'm being serious about this, is, is the airline is in an area that is controlled, where, uh, you're being served it by.
We get a bartender.
Whether it's bartender, whatever, because, only because if you just leave it open, people are serving themselves, you have an issue of underage potentially, and then you have the issue of, so, yeah, you're good, yeah, so I, I.
You can, you can get a bartender, back off, you want some?
So we just went to a conference, and they gave, they gave you drink tickets when you walked in, they just gave you two drink tickets.
That's, that's perfect.
I mean, I'm just throwing it out as an idea, every adult that walks in the door, you give them two drink tickets, you know?
I, I didn't hear.
Um, he's saying, basically, Derek said that, uh, providing drink tickets, maybe two drink tickets per person adult, which is a way to control that, you know, situation where someone just comes, but I still think we should have a, uh, these are beautiful. Um, but we were basically trying to control having someone who's actually serving the alcohol behind the, some, makes you bar, whatever.
Yeah, so you can, you can, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Good idea. All right, any other questions? Motion on the table? All's in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Oh, we did, I want to see if you have any, uh, what I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna.
Irrigation quotes.
Okay, oh, by the way, just, so, you know, I got a call or email from the son of the first mayor of Marvin, and he has artifacts, he plans to be here, he had COVID, weekly expenses, but he plans to be here for September first, looking forward to it, and he also has some artifacts for the tab from when his dad was the mayor of, uh, your town.
Sure, right?
Yeah, he said on A C R T O, um, I didn't realize it was, um, hers.
Oh, car.
Car's son.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, but he makes out, and then we know.
Didn't realize that.
Well, I, sometimes you don't know who's sitting next to you, it's not necessarily, and that's the first time I saw him, because we have been in Zoom meetings for so long too, so. Um, anyway, uh, he represents the, the, so, um, moving on, discussion of their relationship goals.
So, um, a few months ago, we all decided to, uh, before this contract to a vendor who we had been working with over the last several months to finish the project, however, they had some issues, and they're just not, they're not willing to complete the project. So we went out for bids again.
Oh, we're right.
And we only received one quote back from, I think I said the three, yeah, I said the, just three vendors this last month, the first time I said the seven, only had two back the first time, this last time really got one. Christina, remember I said behind, I mean, like, oh, because they came in August, mid August, already five hours, just, yeah.
That's obvious.
Possibly, yeah.
Well, now, it's, whoever, he, that's his, though, it's.
Well, no, but I mean, he, but you think, it's not right to get, like, some whatever they want, or, you know, so, you might be, I don't know, I have no idea, but, um, but possibly, I mean, this is, this is like six thousand dollars for more than the other one, can we, can we wait, can we just ask them one more time, see if they can give us to do a quote for it, and then, and then on, and we got it, the, the, the. So I'll put this on the consent agenda for the next meeting, and I'll get the consent going before then.
No, it's, it's, it's.
Well, Amy, can't do our lights, I mean, I'm waiting on them to do all the lights, we're sitting in the back there, and they tried to get put up for, um, September first, so you've got a dead line, just fuck it.
Call me, let's get a, uh, let's get some dates together, so.
Call me.
Just shaking, so.
I know, I know.
Okay, anything else?
You're the party, Marvin.
I was told not to speak too much on this meeting, okay? Just give it its turn, so I'm just gonna shake my head, right?
You know, you're good, because you're all agreeing over there, okay?
All right, anything else? All right, moving on, discussion of maintenance of Mark Creek Bridge facade.
So, this is even a conversation. Yeah, that was the previous, and we, you all had discussed the Mark Creek Bridge, which is not in Mark, uh, 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 and asked each reach out to the H R S, if they were interested in a four-way split to bring that bridge back up to a acceptable standard that's acceptable for our community, um, all of them have said no, except for Tom Moore said yes, and only on the removal of the signage itself. I, I don't know where this came from, but there's some type of discussion with G O T, somebody, somebody thinks that D O T is going to remove all of the side and help anything?
Help. Well, the, all, of all states, that, that, Marvin and the three communities didn't want help, they make it, they could just go in there and remove all the sides, not have a safety.
They've never said that to me directly.
But, uh, what they did without, oh, what?
Safety.
Safety. So, just, I, I just turned it there, just the other day, I specifically looked, really into brick, uh, wall, right?
There's, there's giant pieces missing.
Oh, there is, yeah.
Is that what they keep calling off?
Okay.
And, and let's, I'm, I'm, for, for, for this, that, let all their fall.
Wait, just, just get that alienated, I, I've seen that on TV, you know, alienate the tapes, it's, it'll be a good work.
Yeah, just let them all down, okay.
All right, moving on, uh, discussion of the building, Marvin's voluntary annexation.
The lunch here, I feel like this is, each, each.
It, the lunch is here.
Yeah. Lunch is here?
Lunch is here.
Did they even say a lot of this?
Yes, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Do you want us to deliver?
Amy, do you want some pizza?
Do you want to, do you want a motion for recess?
Motion for recess.
Are we gonna, working lunch?
Yeah.
Yeah, working, that's fine, the working, all right.
Not like you guys.
All's in favor?
You're back in there for two hours.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Yep, we're back on.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the, uh, working lunch, uh, meeting, and we are on to, uh, discussion of those, Marvin's voluntary annexation.
So I know, um, this has been, you know, discussed prior, you got the staff that's been working on getting the updated numbers, so basically, what's in your packets is the neighborhoods that are in that phase one annexation area, uh, the amount of households, the most up-to-date information from Union County on tax, uh, estimates and stuff, and so then you, you see there basically what the neighborhood is, the estimated total value of all the houses or property there, what it would bring in estimated property tax revenue wise, um, and then I also added a tab, and it is showing average property tax revenue for a household, uh, because I think that's kind of important, especially if we, when we start going through this process of approaching, trying to have an average of what these neighborhoods will pay in taxes per year for the building, Marvin. With that being said, I, I kind of break these down into two to three categories, obviously, obviously, you have P D S, the chimneys. Obviously, you have PDS, the chimneys, Providence Downs, that are fairly large subdivisions, um, where your large increase in tax revenue is gonna come from. And kind of what I think Austin and I discussed is trying to maybe identify one of those to focus on first, and then you have a few of the smaller options that are easier for staff to kind of work with those, either HOA or those property owners. Just because based off the state statute, we have to have the whole neighborhood, if it's a satellite annexation coming in at once compared to, um, you know, having individual properties kind of in an example they want. Do you want to add anything?
Not really, I think you covered the bases, but in addition to looking at individual neighborhoods, we, we still need to make an effort for the individual homes and smaller donut holes. And I'd recommend just simply doing a, doing a mailer, not, not the letter that we sent last time, because people don't read. Um, you need something smaller, like as small as a cue card, like a little, uh, like a postcard or something. It says, you want to annex in, do you want better roads, do you want trash? Two or three quick short things that people can see, yes, I like that, and they can, they'd be more inclined to do something than rather than getting a long letter in the mail. So I think, and so basically, what I'm saying is, we gotta make that effort for those individual homes and those smaller donut holes, too.
So, the, the thing that pops out to me first, and I know this is an issue, like, one of these, um, neighborhoods does not conform to our existing, uh, density, is that, is that right?
Most of them don't, most of them don't.
Most of, well, most of them, and I would have to go look, most of them, like, I know, like, the chimneys, P D A, like, all those are done as conservation subdivisions, yes, they're smaller lots, but if you look at their maps, they have a certain percentage of common open space, so I don't know what the actual density yield is there, but it's not. It's, it's anywhere from probably between one and one point five.
I mean, do any of these help us with, if we were to get these with heritage justification?
What do you mean?
That they're smaller lots?
Or smaller lots?
Yeah, I mean, it could, I don't know if that's really, I don't know if that matters.
You know, come into play by the time heritage is...
Yeah, the one that really sticks out to me is the chimneys.
Yeah.
Partly because if you look at the average property tax per household, it's three hundred and seventy-one dollars, which, what is the, what is, what is the trash collection fee, basically?
Two seventy, no, it's two seventy.
So...
Two thirty.
And that's, that's one where I know a lot of those residents already think they're in Marvin, um, to being that...
Maybe because their neighborhood's called the chimneys, Marvin.
And with that lower, like, average property tax revenue, I think that's something that easily kind of work with the HOAs, homeowners, I'm saying, like, what you did, give it trash, all these other sort of increased services. Um, the other question I had, and I brought this up to chaplain, is because of the way the state statute reads, which is all neighborhood or all platted subdivisions have to annex in at once if they're a satellite. Well, a lot of, like, the Providence Downs, PDS, we're done as phased subdivisions, so technically they're platted as smaller individual type subdivisions. Now, that's still a fight with the HOA, but that's a way we can, like, break it up and maybe focus on certain areas of those neighborhoods, or... And what I mean by that is, like, you're not, instead of looking at three hundred and fifty-five households in Providence Downs, maybe it's like fifty, sixty at a time, um, that we focus on. And like I said, we'd still have to probably fight with the HOA or have those conversations, because it represents the whole development as a whole, but you're still focusing on less property owners than that.
So, let's ask this for a service, yeah, um, say if you get, Ladera comes in, in the next, in the next year before our waste hauling is, um, are they added in, or they moved into the next year, or? And, or is there a set fee, do we have that in a contract with, with our waste hauling company?
Can we add them all?
We can't, if they are, and if they're, and if they're under what the added, what the cost is.
For, for, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're just for a household, for whatever services, we still have it, so we just need times, whatever.
And then, another key question, we're thinking, so Ladera, we don't know if their roads are like, and is that something we will parallel along with DOT, if it's a DOT-owned road, or if it's private road?
Well, Ladera's gated.
I understand, but that's still the option. I'm giving you, name anyone that's on me, is what I'm saying.
First, uh, I think our roads.
So, or parallel, or, I'm gonna count it to Marvin, but that, is that maybe our, after we take over the roads, or do we have a discussion in parallel with DOT?
Well, we would have to parallel, right, and we would have to, assume that's right, it's itself.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, because even if it's a private, like, if it's a gated community, a private road, they can maintain private, if they want to annex in, and they can main, they can stay private roads, but it gives them the option to then petition their next village. I mean, obviously, the gate would be one thing that would have to be removed, or, you know, remain open. Um, and vice versa, if it's already a public road that's going to be added to DOT, then we just have to, you know, work with DOT to have them transfer over that to our, um, maintenance.
But, yeah, we'd have to have some distinctions, because the only way we can take over your roads is if you're gonna have to open up your gates.
We can't, one, one topping point for any gated neighborhoods is, are those flock camera systems? So that would be a suitable substitute for a closed gate, because at least you're keeping track of who's coming in.
For the townhouses on, uh, on Royal Road, that we talked about, I think, the last, I don't know if people live there, but... Would you do gardens there for them?
The final question on your mind, please, try to...
He's asking if, uh, the townhouses on Royal Road, there's thirty-some, uh, thirty-some... And, uh, would they consider maybe a garden for them, because I don't know if there's a place for them to turn around when they first go in and turn it up, and they go back to old Janice.
So within the contract, they have an active multifamily units larger than ten or eleven, so we would not service them, unless we change that.
And most of...
They don't have to move, to move around anything, I'm sure they have smaller, more nimble vehicles going there. Whether we add that through active, I don't know.
If that's in the contract, three, four units for a mill, that's...
How hard to, yeah, it would be as a collective home.
Oh, there's thirty-seven on the home, so...
It, from, with trash, one, I'm not sure, most townhomes or some type of those communities, sometimes part of their HOA will have a dumpster, and just have a communal garbage. And cart collection, yeah, it gets the space and place in those carts, especially with the automated arms and stuff like that, so that would probably be a conversation we could have with active, if they don't have a dumpster slash working with them potentially to have, like, certain areas of the neighborhood have collection, um, carts.
We can, uh, park the road, talk on the way, and they get everything, turn it over to them.
Yeah, I'll go over that in my update.
So, obviously, I think we are all in favor of, then, like, how do you... Just in case, Andy, are we, you guys ready to hear?
Yes, I'd hear you.
Okay. I think we are all in favor of trying to do some of the ball area annexation. What, what do you want from us?
Right, I mean, Austin and I briefly talked about this, I think we, we take one of the big three to focus on, and then maybe focus on two or three of the smaller ones at first. I mean, long-term, obviously, that's split from a staff initiative standpoint, trying to focus our attention on certain neighborhoods. And, and so I don't know if it's a prioritization, I mean, obviously, when you look at the numbers, you'd want PDS, P D A, chimneys right away. But, um, you know, weighing the number of households, the tax, the estimated tax revenue, as well as maybe their location. Um, like, Set Store, for example, has homes already in Marvin. But taking all that and try to figure out a, a list slash prioritization type thing is that to focus on.
So, I know that Christina and I have had conversations, and I'm hoping that somebody's had this conversation with chaplain. We are trying to figure out how to entice people to come into Marvin, and it ain't gonna be through trash, it's probably not gonna be through roads, over half of the neighborhoods are already out of gated. So, what can we entice neighborhoods with? Is it, is it worthwhile going to, listening to chimneys? Going to the chimneys anyway, so we now can afford to say, what do you guys want? To come in, to come in Marvin, what do you guys want? Do you want another deputy, do you want an additional piece of equipment for your playground? Like, what are we able to do legally to try to entice some of these neighborhoods to come in? Because if we can get these neighborhoods to come in, whatever we're sticking up for, we cover tenfold with the property tax revenue.
So I'm, I'm a data person, and so I think, like, that's a, a way to frame it, is like, taking the chimneys, for example, that's an estimated one hundred and five thousand, I mean, in, in revenue. With that being said, if there's public safety, one, I think we already have numbers that our deputies' response, uh, response time is a whole lot, if you live in Marvin, it's, um, a whole lot quicker than if you're out of Marvin. So that's one selling point, but at the same time, if public safety is one of their big priorities, then yes, I mean, we can use that data as well as, that money could be used from, I mean, uh, adding another deputy, or even, you know, providing whatever additional services in the long. And that's kind of the way I think we're looking at it, is we want to, we provide services now, we want to enhance those services, and what additional services can we provide in the long term for all our residents? So, and I, that's exactly what Austin and I said, is like, I, I think each neighborhood's gonna have different priorities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, I think that's kind of the first, first discussion point, it's just we gotta figure out, I guess, who we want to go to and have those discussions with.
What can we, what can we offer?
Well, I mean, we could definitely do the law enforcement, I'll give you title on the legal definition of what economic development is, and actives we could put together, but if we're gonna do it in terms of public safety, which is a good idea, we may want to narrow it down based on, our, the, 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 the officer, based on the tax revenue. If that's the case, it would be pretty easy to look down and say, all right, what gives us more than a hundred thousand dollars? Either a couple of these or one of these, and we target those votes from, from that number statement.
But also, I would, I would argue that, you know, it, it's about providing services. The biggest service you can provide out is waste, and, and the benefits of that is those neighborhoods, they're behind gates, own their roads. They may have the situation that we faced in Marvin, where multiple, um, companies are coming in, so we can potentially reduce their rate of what they're paying, and standardization on when that garbage truck goes through that neighborhood, and less wear and tear on their roads that they're responsible for. So, in the end, when we look at the actual dollars, and I would argue also that, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know if one of you two have this answer, but when you, the revenue aren't just from the property, it's also from the vehicles, and, and then those vehicles, um, which could be a one downfall since we did the taxing of the vehicle, but, um, the, the vehicles, but there's other things that come into play that that money is not, it, it, it's taken away from the counties, I believe, and it's given to the town, a percentage. So the same rate exists, but the county doesn't get as much, and that was the argument years ago, why counties didn't like municipalities, because they were taking away their little sliver of, um, what used to be, um, DirecTV, AT2, whatever it was, services, there was a little sliver that was taken from...
French.
French, that's, that's, that's kind of made a little...
So, would you give a look at it from the, from the graph that, that's on our, Austin gave us? That's like bare minimum numbers, but you're gonna get more than that, because yes, you're right, you're gonna get a retail tax, so they're gonna be giving more money to empower all of them, if we're adding more residents, and possibly roads, but more residents, and that's really where the number comes from, right, I would indicate what we have. Um, and then you're getting, you need that same tax revenue, which is by person, so these are like bare minimums.
So, so maybe, maybe one day your test is not clicking out, go ahead.
I disagree.
You know, um, maybe we have some sort of contractual thing saying, okay, you got gated rooms, which means we're not gonna take care of it, but being that you are a resident, we'll help participate in, kind of like what happened with the fight years ago, we were going out to Landac's account, and saying, hey, we, we've taken care of the North Carolina roads, let's take care of some, we had to go to Landac, and the community said, we'll only have a certain amount of dollars to get moved up to the list and stuff, so, um, whether it's representation to, you know, or, or maybe help in procuring a contractor that uses our contractors with DOT, and uses our, and again, you appeal to the vote. Who are you gonna talk to if you have issues in your community? Who is your voice? It's, I mean, it's your HOA, that's your voice right now. So there's some multiple level of things why you would want to be a community, that we actually put in the paper. I, I, I think, again, I know there's a, a letter I started drafting, that started talking about all the reasons why. When you really look at it, for the average, just five hundred dollars, I think, uh, or maybe a little bit more.
I think it's six hundred now.
Six hundred and some dollars. Then, you know, if you're not willing to have representation, and then, not, not only representation, but also, um, an ability to secure contracts and work off of the building, Marvin, with, when we're doing roads, or, to your point, if you want to give them something, um, and again, I don't know how you write this up, if it's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars to, to do it, even though they have a gate, that we're gonna participate and offer twenty thousand, or whatever the number is, I don't know how you...
To, 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 to...
To, to help with that, and when it's time to get your roads serviced, that may be the other way from a service standpoint. I don't know if it's legal or not, but, you know.
One idea I had, and this is where it's different, so some of the municipalities, like, if they own their infrastructure, like, if we own water, so, which I'm not saying we're getting in that business, but like, the rate structure, they would have an out-of, counter, uh, out-of-town rate and in-town, is, you know, even though the county owns the infrastructure, I don't know if there's a way to work on rates where then we supplement certain, I, I, I don't know, this is all hypothetical, I don't know the numbers behind it, but like, if the county rates are twelve bucks, but you own the Marvin, it's ten, and we supplement the two, I, I don't know, I mean, based off of some of that revenue, but, um...
I mean, I think if you've got, I don't know what we can do, I'll get that from Chuck, or, that, that's, we said, they're probably hypothetical, that's all they want. We've got to figure out what we're allowed to do, what we're allowed, or what we can't do.
In, in the meantime...
I mean, obviously, purposes we offer now, but...
I mean, in the meantime, I think what we could do is the council and staff, if you think of something that could be, just to speak out all those bullet points to, or, and then draft a letter, and then get the proof that's gonna be part of everything to pitch.
Well, we have all that stuff that, that we're, that we work on, that we sent out, that has, that has rate, rate...
You're talking about the letters? Uh, we still have, we still have some of that information.
It's not people.
We still have some of that information on the website. The, the feedback I've gotten from the letters was they were too long-form, and people, and people don't read, people don't read, that's just a simple fact.
Exactly, yeah.
It's not people.
It's gotta be marketing materials.
Here's my suggestion.
Yeah, do you have a comment here?
Yeah. Next.
So, the one, one thing that I'd like to suggest, first of all, is, you know, everybody's throwing all this stuff about gates and stuff. One thing I'd like to suggest, so the first, looking at some communities that don't have gates, that's an obstacle behind the deal. The other thing is, uh, it's been brought to my attention that, um, by a resident in chimneys, that they were told years ago, they wanted to annex, that they were not eligible to annex in Marvin because of our zoning policies. So, I think, um, clearing out some disagreements from the community as to what we're looking for would be a really good start so that people do want to annex, they can.
I, I think, Andy, I think you're absolutely right that people were told that, and it was from previous councils that I think thought a lot of themselves, did not want to be more inclusive, they really wanted Marvin to continue to try to be, quote-unquote, exclusive. and did not want to open it up to their non-horse group. And I really think that came down to all, as well, it was all politics, it had nothing to do with our businesses, and wanted to make sure that other people weren't coming in and messing up the, the math somehow.
And, yeah, the bottom line is, if they were electable, when you bring in all these other communities, they were worried about being elected. If you could change the election, you just by adding one neighborhood, you could.
Did you, so, did we send chimneys, the letter, the last possession clear?
It, we did, and we got, we actually got an annexation petition from the chimneys, but it wasn't contiguous, we couldn't move forward.
So my suggestion is, an idea to you, let's start with the neighborhoods that don't have gates, and as we go through this process, we can kind of start figuring the gate situation out. My suggestion is, is we can start with the chimneys, but then if you also look at your, your background letter that you guys did, and if you look at this, you've got Cecil, Wellington, Chase, or maybe this, but with the problem, you've got eleven of Thera Farm, one of Providence, fourteen of Willow, three, three of Beachwood, one of Calhoun Farms, ten of Providence, the states, and four Marvin neighbors. I mean, I see you go from neighborhood, and then we try to finish out these other neighborhoods.
We're, we're making progress on Wellington, Chase, you guys will be, will see that ordinance, two of them.
And Sedgfield, you know, is already personally in Marvin, everything along that's on there, as an example, so that's another one that we could, that hopefully try to, you know, let's get the rest of the neighborhood, get somebody in there that's proposing, and go after the rest of the neighborhood.
But then you're also going to Providence Downs, because they have got three streets in Marvin that are restaurant. I said, let's go with like, one neighborhood, one full neighborhood that's not gated, and then, and then, yeah, I mean, no one said to go there if you want to. Providence Downs is gonna be like other, all the way up, because it's so similar, but if there's like a few houses that are left in Sedgfield, throw those in there, and then let's, let's try to finish out those neighborhoods, and then let's go after the chimneys.
For Thera Farms and Sedgfield, I've spoken quite a bit to their HOA, to their HOAs or their representatives that are gonna be part of their HOA, Sedgfield has just formed their HOA, um, their main issue is, is their roads, and they want a way to, they, they were looking for a way for us to take them over, and they're gated, so we can, yeah.
So maybe, maybe that's what Joe's talking about, maybe, maybe they keep their roads, they keep their gate, but we will give some sort of statement.
Of course.
To them, to help maintain them.
Yeah. So I think, I think the key to this, the key to what we do as, as council, you want this, is listen. Most important thing, I think you touched on, is go to chimneys and go, okay, we, we wanna, let's start the battle. But the battle starts with you telling us what you want, because in, then, then they say, oh my God, we would love, we would love traction, we can fix that. Then you go, we love.
Yeah, good crime.
We love it.
I'll say, I'll say one of the things that we struggled with the last campaign was we couldn't get traction in the communities. We tried reaching out to the HOAs, the board was either nonexistent or not willing to talk to us, so we really need people like in the ground, and guys that are from the community to go out and, you know.
So, so I think that, I think if we are looking at smaller numbers, which we clearly are, we're covering to like, six, ten neighborhoods, whatever it is, at one time, if we look at one neighborhood, we call that person that wanted to annex in, the chimneys, we sit down with you and Hunter, me and Joe and Jamie, Wayne and Joe, whoever, sit down with that person, invite their HOA president, or vice president, or secretary, or somebody, we get somebody. And if we can't get them, that person that wanted to annex in, you get them to get that person. Because they clearly saw the benefit of being in Marvin, and then let's, let's sit down and start that. And, and I think that, because when we did it before, like I had four neighborhoods, Jamie had like six, like, it was like, we, it was too much, like, if we could focus on one. And then honestly, like, these other ones where we have like, one or two houses in a neighborhood in Marvin, it should not be that far.
I have a question, uh, the people who control the vote, because they don't, be in our city or our village, is the owner not the tenant?
The owner.
How about if somebody's got two or three houses in the chimney?
It's not the owner, it's the tenant.
It's the owner.
Owner of the house.
If I'm running a house, I have to vote in that.
Yeah.
If that is my resident.
You have to live, you can't have to live within the municipal window, it's the, you're one of the owners.
Yeah, I'm saying the same, if you're talking about the vote of the annexation, you're talking about the vote of the people.
Yeah, vote of the annexation, that is not, that is not.
I hear you, yeah. Okay, what?
I hear you saying vote of the.
Vote of the annexation.
Well, I don't know if somebody's got, like, two or three houses.
Oh, perfect, well, they should be good, they, they can vote for.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have a vote of meaning.
To the annexation.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Perfect. And then that's three or four, then you get that traction.
Can I ask a clarifying question? When you're, when you're referring to the vote, are you referring to an involuntary referendum, or are you referring to an HOA board vote?
That, we got it, he's, he's got an age, he's talking about the vote of the people, he's talking about the vote of the annexation.
Like, if you wanna petition to annex, the owner has to do it, not the tenant.
No, it's not.
Correct.
But then when you're annexing, the tenant's the one that's the voter people, and.
No, we're not, we're not.
You, you, you're asking.
Senior, a lot of votes.
Yes, that's correct, that's correct, okay.
The lights of Sats, so, from the zoning conflicts and zoning thing, one, it's not an issue, because our RUC language, which is colors, can give that, it basically states that, whatever setbacks and stuff that your subdivision was platted and all that, they will continue.
Yeah.
And long term, my recommendation is, we get some of these neighborhoods, we would probably brought, unless they brought, like, expand our zoning regulations and district regulations, to make sure it's kind of all-inclusive, not necessarily trying to say we're promoting, even higher than permitting, but just kind of have it more clarified.
I, I, I don't think that, I don't think that we, as council, can use an argument of, we don't want this neighborhood in here because it is not on one acre of land. Can I put it, it's a perfect example, it is not on one acre of land, it's how the people live together, all of their stuff does not conform to, like.
Wayne and Chase.
So I'm not worried about that as like, a reason we can't go out for any.
Well, but you get, Jones will be owning here.
Well, that's different, that's different.
But I mean.
But that, that's a whole different.
If we go get somewhere in place, I'll agree with you, we should not, we should not.
Yeah, that's, that match.
The second, the second thing is, kind of building off of the comments about the roads and some type of stipend is, my other recommendation is, I know Sedgfield reached out to us about helping with the road and all that. If we can get these neighborhoods that are private, because a lot of these HOAs are going through the process of repaving, whatever, is, you know, looking at doing a call, like, a basically cost-benefit analysis, like, okay, we'll, we'll take you over a certain percentage, we'll pay, because right now, we basically have to have it up to standard before we take it over. But then, you know, that's a decision for you guys to make as the elected body, but making sure you have that information, okay, it's gonna cost us this much, or they're asking for us to pay this much for, um, to resurface and they'll annex in and petition those roads over, but then, then you take, okay, look at the tax revenue we're gonna get, here's the power bill revenue we're gonna get, and basically, we'll regain our money within four or five, whatever it is. Um, because I think that's one, I mean, one way we can really approach it, is like, we're gonna have to maybe be willing to maybe spend some money upfront, but know that we're gonna get it back on the back end, but know that's fine.
And then, and more that I think about, more that I look at these numbers, and if, and if it is an option, and honestly, if it is an option, we can do something. I mean, honestly, if we can do something that is a little bit more outside the box, then, I mean, I absolutely think that it would make work. So, especially if we get, I think these numbers that you have, your garbage, that companies, these are bare minimums, because you're gonna get other revenue stream increases from other places.
So, in conjunction with that, if you remember a couple of months ago, Robinwood, the Robinwood situation, where they wanted to, they wanted to pay their streets, but they wanted us to do an assessment on their, their roads, and basically assess them after the fact, and we, we weren't comfortable with the money being upfront, unless we were able to, you know, do some type of law. Um, would you guys still be willing to entertain that thought, of we was, like, essentially, for instance, we would annex in and, and do an assessment at the same time? So we're basically fronting the money.
Yes, because we're doing it in Marvin, we're getting a revenue source, Robinwood, and, and that's the reason, Robinwood's already Marvin, like, as much as that, like, it's only out, like, we're not getting any additional revenue stream from that in order to offset the load of the pound, which is, that's not, I mean.
One, one thing that I can add is, we could probably create a program, because technically, you're not supposed to, like, give money to the communities, but the way you gotta get around it is like, doing a forgiving loan program, where it's like, if they meet the obligations of it, if it's annexing or whatever, then whatever is paid upfront is forgiven, as in, they don't have to pay anything back, but then it's like, if we, say, for example, Sedgfield, it's like, okay, why annex in, once you pay the roads and stuff, and they don't do it for some reason. Well, if we have this, is that, that program in place, and they don't meet that, then we can go back and claim the money that we, um, put in. Like, I, we, I did it for a facade grant program, that's how you kind of get around it. Basically, if you're the municipality that annexed now, they have to get the obligations and so on.
I like it.
But, and the last thing I'll add is, what I'll do to this chart, is I'll go in to these neighborhoods, or add, add columns in to show public and private roads, which ones are public, which ones are private, as well as if they have a gate or not, just so we always have.
And there are a couple on here of, like, the Lederer and Gates, like, both of those are gated, and they're almost right in neighborhoods, and their roads should be pristine right now. So, like, there's something to be said about, like, maybe, as it's traction, of going after those, because the road, you're not gonna be doing anything with your roads, whereas say, Providence Downs, it's all a neighborhood, their streets aren't as new, and as nice as say, Lederer Farm. And that also makes a difference for people that are getting, we're talking, is almost bringing in their roads, or almost bringing in their not gated.
Well, I think prioritize, and give them a hard vote.
Yeah.
And, because they'll say, those are, they're gonna keep it up, one bite at a time, so they're trying to hold up, and I think our technicals are trying to hold up. And I think that could be good work, but I think most of them, they just listen to what each individual needs are, so let's just say we went out here, Rosewood, said, okay, Rosewood, let's sit down with us all, let's hear what their, what their payment points are, and address their payment points in some way, and we get, we get a win or a bet, okay, we check that.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I, I think, I think that's the, I think that's the, I think that's the whole way that we're gonna get traction, is what is the next one to do, you guys?
And one win at a time.
Yeah.
We're never gonna give, because we're, we're, we're swatting, we're swatting.
Yeah, because we're stretching it. My, my suggestion is start with the chimneys department, and those other neighborhoods that need some, like, little, just one-offs. Especially if Sedgfield, like, approached us and said, hey, what can you do, well, here's what we can do, but here's what we're gonna do for you.
Yeah, the other thing, day-wise, is with the gate, is yeah, showing, there are, you know, with the block, basically, how the blocks isn't gonna do, I mean, mainly the same thing, or publicity.
I think this is communities that haven't gated or not, they're on the go.
Yeah.
So if they're not gonna find, we'll do that.
So let's, when I say prioritize, let's, if we were to look at this list, and we come to a consensus, let's, the lowest thing improved.
I think, I think, I think it's chimneys department.
And then let's go like, lowest, let's get a win under our name.
That's my suggestion.
And don't even, don't even think about any of these others, unless they approach us and say, let's buy the lowest thing for, address their payment points, bring it in, and then we have success, and we know what the process looks like, and how we addressed the process, whether it was trash, or whatever, 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 and then, then we go.
What is that process, like, what if, say, we go to chimneys, and, and we say, we want to go annex in, you guys want to ask, you guys ask, you, and we'll probably why? Whatever it is, and they say, okay, you're ready, is it the HOA that makes the decision, is it each individual house that has to say that?
Individual.
So what if it's like, three houses, one person that wanna do it, three houses, one person, like, how's that?
Um, so, it'd have, it'd have to be contiguous, as long as there's a contiguous line of properties they can annex in. You can have holdouts, we had holdouts in Wellington, Chase. Wellington, Chase, being a large subdivision, came, came in over the course of over a decade, and they, I wanna say they came in probably a third at a time, roughly.
And how can we have a holdout if it's not contiguous?
Because it feels a contiguous, like.
Like, you can, like, you can have four on this street, three on this, three on this street, and then you can cross the street and have, and start a line. So that's how you end up, ended up with those five homes in Wellington, Chase that still aren't in. It's, everything else is contiguous, but it's just those five homes.
So you can't get, you can't just go into the chimneys and go, okay, and then vote, and vote, or six, four, this is none of them.
I'm not an attorney, but I would think that you, an HOA could probably compel them to, if, if it was in their, in their regulations, and if it was not, they would probably penalize that home by saying, okay, you don't annex in, okay, well, you're paying the village of Marvin for this, if they provide this service for us.
And.
So, okay, so that's.
Do you know what I mean, like, like.
Yeah. So that's your force to people.
Well.
So let's, so let's find out the traffic.
Yeah.
Let's find out the traffic, like, what, how that was, and then, again, if it's, we do it one neighborhood at a time, if we get sixty percent of the neighborhood, they want in, and forty percent doesn't, and we start making a play, that's forty percent that doesn't.
Well, what I was gonna add, that's, is that if that sixty percent, if a majority of those homeowners are what makes it contiguous, then you start with them anyway, because they have built that, that contiguous line, um, and then over time, yes, we can probably give the, the remaining ones of those, but.
We, we need to have that specific, because when we go and pitch this to a neighborhood, they're gonna say, well, what's the process?
Yeah.
If we, if we come back and say, yeah, we wanna do it, what, what do the, what do the homeowners have, like, what is the, so.
We'll get, we'll get some direction.
To, 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 to deal with.
Yeah, it's a process of all that stuff.
We'll get some direction from Chaka on what we can, can't, can't handle the HOA questions about forced annexation essentially, um, but what.
I don't know about forced annexation, I wanna know, what is the process? We go on the HOA board, and we say, hey, we want you guys to take a vote, does it, does it have to be, like, does HOA says the majority rule? We make a specific change, or does it have to be every single house? Like, I have to go, I have to go, it's how it is for me, and then I'm next, and then Bob, and Joe doesn't wanna do it, but then, Bob lives over here, and he wants to do it, so then is that contiguous, or we just get back to our hunter, he wants to do it?
Yes.
So she, like, yes, the each, that's each individual property, but would can the HOA just make the decision?
Think, I cannot, if, 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 if the hours tells you, they have the majority, or they have to do what percentage of the.
That's what I'm saying, so, when I say the HOA, I'm gonna, I mean, the HOA is a whole, so is it, you know, sixty percent of the neighborhood says, yeah, we wanna do it?
Yeah, depending on sixty percent, so it's certain.
Like, you know, I, I don't know, like, if that's sixty percent, not say yes, then if sixty percent say yes, then we just go and start annexing.
If that, if that, if that's in favor, yes, as long as they touch, you can come in.
We, we couldn't go in immediately, we would still have to get the annexation petition back, each individual property owner.
Right, but what I'm saying is, sixty percent, so say you have a hundred homes, and they're sixty of them are onboard, and they're gone, so you start mapping it out, and as long as they touch, or contiguous.
If it was a solid, solid touches.
Yes.
Well, if you think about it, you go to the middle of the road, and then that corner, if there were four homes here, that corner touches four houses. So if it's any one of those four homes, it'd be, I believe that's.
But then you got three that really don't wanna do it.
Then, you may be out of, out into the wild, so you get that, but what you can do in HOA, and what we can do, is kind of say, even with a vote, come in and say, you're forced to come in with Marvin, it is each, like, their own deed, and when you sign that deed, you sign the agreement, you work off, and then, and you can continue to be. And but.
So we'll, um, also, first, there are, there are some calculations based off of, I'm gonna use this term, was the involuntary annexation, based off of a majority of a certain number of drug franchise to, to, so that's essentially what you're asking, does, can the majority rule on certain things? So we'll ask Chaka a question.
My problem.
Same, the same thing with roads, like, when you do an assessment, like, if all of us live on the same road, and I want my road resurfaced, and I'm the majority owner, it doesn't really matter what you guys think, I'm gonna get the road resurfaced, because I'm the majority owner.
I'm skeptical, but I see what you mean.
At the end of the day.
That's the question.
At the end of the day, to Chika's point, find out what you want, that's gonna be a long process, because usually, if we're talking to them, they gotta go to the hand of we, or they all, especially, and say, hey, this is on the table, um, start talking about what, what.
and say, hey, this is on the table, um, start talking about what, what it is that we want, we want to be part of.
But the HOA is probably going to say.
Yes.
For the chimneys.
Well, that means that while we're working on the, can we get a disagreement with you all on, on some type of issue?
Chimneys?
I think.
Okay, so we'll start working on contact for chimneys.
Maybe you'd like the chimneys to start with?
The thing, well, yeah, that's, that's what I said. You know, I'm just, I'm saying you're looking at this map, okay, but I'm just wondering how Weddington Chase did? Because, you know, there's several don't holes in there as we now, then annexed and the rest of the community did. So how did, how did they annex that?
If, when they were building Weddington Chase, they had forced annexation within the middle of it, they have, they switched it to voluntary.
Right in the middle of their.
Okay.
Okay, and Joe, you are right, as long as the corners touch, because that's exactly how Waxall, you know, losing switches from one side to the other with the form.
Okay, that makes sense. Good job. So, so we'll work on the legal definition, Austin and Hunter, we're going to get any contact information. And we'll present some findings at the next work session.
Well, well, Austin.
They're not getting.
Yeah, so you, it is, I just think, but, but what I'm thinking is when you start to look at this and call Doug always, Doug doesn't know. But if you start the chimneys and you went to the next one to Wallen Pond. It brings us out from that concept, but if you start, but if you start connecting the Doug, because right now we don't have Doug.
It's a. We've got holes.
We just got holes. So let's, let's connect the Doug and then we can start.
Hmm, if you, if, if you were to connect that donut hole, that would strengthen our argument to the state.
Well, I like the idea of Wallen Pond, I also like the chimneys. I mean, I think Bola are a key neighborhood.
Hey, I mean, Jake's agreeing with us. He said, he, he's just saying, after you do the chimneys, you start coming up to actually make a side of the donut, like if you're looking at the map.
Yeah, I get that, and I, I agree a hundred percent. I mean, Wallen Pond is a, is a key neighborhood to, to surround the village, kind of mark it off differently.
I agree.
Getting the schools into Marvin has been tough. We haven't had any luck there yet. That would also improve our boundaries.
That is hard.
Getting, getting the other schools in Marvin. In Marvin Ridge, getting Marvin Ridge and Sandy Ridge actually in Marvin.
I mean, I, I don't know why they wouldn't. The school, Sandy Ridge, the high school, we lost, get them into Marvin and have them where they should be counted. They don't pay taxes anyway, so I don't know why.
But that would have to be a negotiation with the Board of Education, but.
No, they, they don't, they don't, they don't, they don't pay taxes.
I know.
So that, that's what, yeah, they'll lose the Board of Education.
You, you, you need sales tax, or sales taxes?
No.
When you go, you might consider about that within the jurisdiction.
Do they, um.
Be less vague.
I don't think they do.
Quick, quick question.
Yeah.
Must say that Weddington looks the same map and goes, huh, we need to go to Wallen Pond. Why, why, why?
We have a.
Annexation.
Yes.
That's what that blue line is.
Yeah, so we don't annex theirs, they don't annex us.
Ooh, I understand, I got it.
There's also statutory restrictions too, that one municipality that you're closer to has to agree to sign off. Regardless of an agreement, if there's a parcel that wants to annex in, if another municipality is closer, that municipality has to.
Yeah.
Only if your agreement's, that doesn't, only if your agreement is a cover of that territory.
If it, it's whatever property you are, by, mile, is closer to, to boundary touches, you have to go to them first for annexations, like.
The state, I know the general is not interested in that.
If you have, if a property's being annexed, it's first, regardless of the plan, that's what, I can, I can pull that for you.
But that's what I'm saying, so. Like you couldn't have.
That's how we, we get, get. Man, we didn't ask, what, they're in our annexation area.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to find, like, you don't have an agreement twice, all right?
No.
So like this property, let's just take this. They would technically legally by the state statute, you have to ask, they would have to ask Waxall per slash.
You're right, you're right.
Be relinquished from Waxall to then come to petition with Marvin.
Okay. So are you guys good?
Yeah.
Do you know what we, like, what your marching orders are and you're going to tell us whenever you need us to tag in or?
The, one thing I wanted to add, which I, I want to, I do want to ask Jack about is, because it brings up the HOA, you know, majority. Like chimneys, for example, has a lot of common open space. If their HOA decides a majority, could they petition their common open space? Which then would make pretty much every property in there contiguous.
Yes.
And then, then it would be up to individual property owners at their time.
That's not simple.
That's, I'm pretty sure that is, that's a fact.
That's a good point.
Because.
Also, you gave it to us.
Yes, because the HOA is the owner of the property. They can petition their own properties by vote of the board.
So all the common property in Annisburg is owned by, of course it is, because we had, I have it, my mom, I have it.
Because if you look, if you look at the chimneys on the map, none of those properties technically, I think, are contiguous to Marvin. There's common open space or preservation strip tied down to it. So if you were able to get that, then it would make would, wouldn't it make them the HO, common open space contiguous with Marvin, which in theory, any property that touches those could petition them when they want.
Does HOA common open space need taxes?
No.
So what are they there?
Most of them, I'm about ninety-nine percent positive, but they don't.
Hmm, I mean, the land has value.
If our HOA base.
It depends on.
What was the question? HOA's common space does not exist?
They don't.
That is basically. It's like what we're doing in, in, in Fort Flory, if this was a hundred and twenty-five acres of contingent and we built all that out in one area and all the rest of it would be open space. It'd be fast and spacey until it's, wow. Yeah.
Huh.
An even.
This has been a fruitful discussion.
So we'll start with the chimneys, and in the meantime, start as far as contact information. We'll start working on that in time to build our ambassador, back station. If y'all know anyone in the chimneys that wants to be a part of this, it'd be great to have it as a second meeting. And then we'll get some answers from Jack on the other part of things, and we'll present findings back at the next work session. Hopefully, in the meantime, we can have R and A discussion with the HOA residents and just say, this is what they want. And then you can have progress as to what we're legally allowed to do for a loan that.
They don't do their progress.
There's a lot of people in there that think they're already in Marvin, so this is, this is a great idea.
Yeah, they come. There are a ton of those. They want, one or two of those, so they've come all the way.
Oh, yeah, they're all supposed to be. There are, all of them. Okay.
We good?
We got our marching orders.
Okay, Tom, everybody's good on that, you two?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm great, I'm great with it.
All right, moving on, uh, so we can discuss the fall town hall meeting.
Just really fast, we haven't had a town hall meeting since fall of last year. We had it at the barn, at the park, um.
We're a third week away.
We had, we had so, you know, we had so much going on this past spring with the, especially with the move in Marvin Day. Uh, I'm, basically what I'm asking is, do you guys want to have a town hall meeting in the next few months?
Yes.
What, when do you want to have it?
October twenty-first, October twenty-eighth.
Two.
October thirteenth.
Which day?
October thirteenth.
What day of the? What, what, um, what day of the week?
That's Thursday.
Thursday.
Six.
Twenty.
Thursday, October.
The sixth, the sixth. What are we going to, I, he's like picking day out of your brain. How about the sixth?
Six. Yeah, six, four.
All right.
Six, five.
Joseph, Austin has town hall meeting.
I am? Hold on, am I really? Like, I don't even know my own schedule, that's bad.
I have the twelve, October, it's a Wednesday, it's not a Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, that's my, I know, I'm out of town.
How about the twelve, October?
That's fine.
Wednesday night.
Fine.
I'm good with that.
Out here, so we'll interfere with church.
Yeah. Yay, independent.
Thank you, Christina.
Independent. So what is it, twelve, thirteen, twenty?
Twelve, thirteen, twelve?
I'm good with the twelve.
We have council meeting right quarter, so, you know, we can kind of prep up for that.
Where, where are you?
What's that? Uh, well, I'm looking at the eighteen.
What time of the day do you want to have it? Six P M. like we normally do?
Six.
Six P M. for meeting?
Well, if it's, you know, eight to zero, huh? That's third, I mean, if you had a seven, I told you. Let's be around zoom in. Right?
I'm so confused, or what, what date have we decided on?
Twelve. Twelve.
Okay, October the twelfth.
Austin, where are you? Are you going on the week?
I'm just going on the sixth.
Oh, listen to this, I'm going for the week.
The, the, okay.
Well, the, the fourth is young, you're four.
That's definitely on the fourth. Does your fourth say on the fourth?
Yeah.
My question is on the fourth.
Um, so six P M., seven P M., what are you thinking?
Which day?
On the October fifth.
Are we going on the fifth? Is everybody getting up?
Yeah.
Okay, we're doing the fifth.
All right.
At what time?
At six thirty.
Six thirty, here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um. Uh.
Oh, wow, what is it?
The other question I have is just a pretty much preliminary discussion of what you guys want to talk about.
Hold on, six thirty, that one was said, we're good?
Yes.
Preliminary discussion, round of out.
Hold on, let me get that. Round of out, trash, annexation.
Every two, or every two.
There's two, we're baffled.
Yeah, talk about that.
Um, maybe one, road update evidence, or roads?
Roads.
Well.
Road hall, show up at the hall somewhere. We miss you all at the road updates every week?
Yeah. Update, some pictures and updates on Marvin Day.
Yes, update on Marvin Day, love picture, what we allowed yours.
Thanks on the traffic circle, did that mean still?
I already said round of out. Um, where, where we are in our.
Pick up the line, that's like, here.
Andy, I already said that. Where we need, where we are trading, what's the park?
Mm-hmm.
Projects, we got help on?
Your communication stuff, that's, just to say, if you're not getting these with a snow, and you are getting them with this information, this is, this is the official communication that will be built tomorrow. So if you get something outside of that.
Copy of council.
Copy is, uh.
Copy of chairs.
That's right.
Copy of council slash chairs.
Because I think people want to talk about chair room, no, we're having chairs.
Yeah. Oh, and then it's coming up.
Upcoming.
We should, we should be in the initial stages of the branding and wayfinding stuff, so that could be possible.
Rooster, I pretend to be.
So, so we can talk about our fall trunk retreats at the park, we can talk about our angel tree, and we can talk about our raid in the tree right.
Okay, angel tree and.
Is that the living area for you?
And we will bring this back at a future meeting, just to go over some of the.
I think it also made this kind of an update on where we are in projects within Marvin, like development projects.
Update on ongoing developments.
Yeah, very good, of course.
Okay, we can do that.
Trash, how great trash is going to be. We'll just talk about that.
Trash, how was that?
Trash.
Trash.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, go on.
I think I'm good, Christina. Anything?
Hey, you can, you can sit down there.
But the stuff that y'all's counting.
I'm, I'm already getting counter invites. Um, I think I'm good. I've got enough.
All right, moving on, uh, review of council minutes from six thirty to twenty-two work session to seven twelve, you do regular.
Okay, there, the minutes are in your packets. Um, I'm not asking for action once, if, if you guys don't have any changes, I'm going to put these on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Five changes.
Ten other changes. Andy, you good? Give the thumbs up.
Great.
All right, so that, um, just motion put that on.
You don't want to motion.
Moving on, discussing the town shore, road median, minutes.
Wait, wait a minute. Oh. What?
Is that mic over, remind, like, air, please, let's be honest.
Don't help me, Derek.
Can you see the stars coming?
Joe, this is another thing you guys need to do, uh, the Emerald Meadows, the Emerald Meadows board says, that's the same thing we had. That piece of media is not in Marvin, is not in, uh, touched, within the Emerald Meadows, is not part of us. And they moved it up, you know, nonprofit, how they can take money from you, you said, if Marvin can give them money to do this, how you going to pass money, money on the table, over the table? They don't want to, they're afraid of getting in trouble, but they're nonprofit. To work.
So, so we're just going to let it ride?
Yeah, they did clean it up the last time they was there. Good on you.
Is it, is it, which we need to talk about? The one that has like three plants in it, or just four down?
No, no, about three plants, we have to talk about the square foot.
Right, so my suggestion is, because they cleaned it up once, maybe twice, like, over the past whatever, it would seem like you can count this and they're going. As I know, I come in two miles and halfway from Charlotte all the time, I'm a driver, I'm on two wheels, weighing constantly, I go to five yards. As we see it get bad, especially in the summertime where everything is growing, can we just send, sorry, Derek, can we send our crew out just to? And say nothing?
There's, most of the time what it needs is just spraying.
Yeah, I mean, it's just weeds, grow through the crack.
That's right.
I, I would rather put it on a maintenance schedule, let me know, so it's just here and there, so we can just collect and decide, maybe once a month.
No, not that often.
You already that often? So maybe like every other month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, listen.
I mean, that would be, I know it's not our property, but that is an easy thing, it's not in the grid where we're having to set a couple hundred thousand dollars to do something, and it's still out there in spray, and there's one little thing that we do. I mean, we don't technically, I mean, I know you should, but you don't, I don't want to get one, and then we get one, we're actually, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it from my guy's standpoint, uh, just, you know, mark out exactly where you want it, what you want done. She can give it to me in a work order and we can just add it to our maintenance schedule. They're going out there and checking on the trails periodically, so we're already popping, popping by that area.
Was every other month, you mean, the first few years? Where I can come off, right, it's mostly concrete, it has like two or three deep, and one of it might say giant red up over it, and it's like terrible.
Yeah, can't wait.
Okay, is there a, and then you just.
I'll take, I'll, something, yeah, I'll take care of it. Yeah, I'll take care of it. All right, moving on, discussing of the aspiration for the COVID-nineteenth state of emergency.
Okay, so this, again, I.
Come back, come back, come back, send it down to Austin.
Austin, Austin, um. Grazie, um. Austin, Austin, um, gracias, um, really briefly, you got the remote participation policy that you all adopted, well, I guess the previous council adopted, in 2018, basically, Governor Cooper is ending the state of emergency on Monday, Monday, August 15th, so your regular meeting will be your last meeting under the COVID-19, uh, state of emergency, once it expires, remote participation will not be available as we currently offer it, um, meaning we will revert to the council policy, the council policy states that you are allowed to participate remotely, but it's supposed to be rarely, you need to notify me eight hours, at least eight hours before a meeting, and you have limited circumstances in which you can use, um, this protocol, if you're out of town, at least an hour away, you're per, you have an illness, disability, or there's an emergency situation, you do not count towards a quorum, and...
Repeat that again?
You do not count towards a quorum, if you're, if you're participating remotely, meaning if there's only three people here, and we need one more for a quorum, if you're on remote, you don't count, and we don't have quorum.
So, you can vote?
So, based on the poli, based on what the policy says, and I'm gonna double check with Chaplain on this, you cannot participate in quad judicial hearings, so that means SUPs, for example, um, you know, closed sessions, or anything confidential, I want to make sure with Chaplain that, about your ability to vote, it's not specifically written in, but the other boards are not allowed to vote if they're remote, so I just want to double check on that. I've got it on my list already to do, yeah, uh, does anybody have any questions?
If those county courts respect it, right, without beating?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question, that's not written into the policy, one, one other thing, one other thing that we're gonna need to be more careful about than we've been during the state of emergency is, if you're remote, the technology has to be working, so if you can't hear us, or we can't hear you, the council president needs to disallow, um, the participation, because you don't ever want to be challenged on action taken by the council in which someone can claim, oh, the member couldn't hear.
Okay, with, with that being said, Austin, do you have our, Austin, do you have our, to calendar?
What do you mean?
Never, you know how we used to have, but I used to have a calendar, and then drop my calendar.
Do you mean the meeting schedule?
Yeah.
Let me see if I ever put that in here, no, I haven't, but I can, if you actually go to upcoming, go back to your homepage on the app and click upcoming, you'll see a list of all your meetings there, of every meeting you're, of every upcoming meeting that you're, that you're a participant on.
Okay, so here, okay, so here's my question, I know that I just said I can't, or say a couple of meetings, I would really like to participate, to be here, and I, I'm not working, I just, I just... I'm still being remote next week, because I'll be allowed to for a state of emergency, but I would like to be at some of these other meetings, if, if I can sit down and clean out people, can we look about possibly taking a couple of dates?
What meetings are you gonna miss, just so I already have those dates written down?
Can I text it to you, because I wouldn't say it out loud, but it would be never on that?
That'll be fine.
Okay, but is there a, and obviously, I mean, anybody that knows that there can be a meeting, or like this upcoming, we didn't have to say it before, we didn't have to...
Just make sure that if you're moving meetings, just know you cannot move it forward one week, because you're, you'll be at the same time as the planning board meeting.
Can we have, can we have a planning board meeting, if they can have a, they're governing here?
I would not recommend that.
Why? Nobody can see the meeting, doesn't matter.
The clerk, the clerk can't be at two places at one time, neither can the planner, so...
But you guys can have, that is fine, okay.
Although, I, I don't think with what's going on right now, I, I just find this ironic, because of this, on the 15th, and now you're starting to see lockdowns start.
Kind of case going up right there, right there, COVID.
Yeah.
Do you want to, you talked about it?
We don't have a party.
I, I just find this ironic, I don't think, I'm wondering if it's not, I'm wondering if it's gonna actually happen, but...
Alright.
Everybody good?
Yeah, but Austin, you know, everybody, because I know you're too specific.
And just know that if you move any council meeting for, back, like, forward one week, where it's adjacent to a work session, you're not gonna have a big agenda, just because staff will not have the time to prepare a lot of items.
Yeah, are we, can I, can we, you know, do that? I mean, if you can't move that a week ahead, and we forgot planning board, I can do it on Monday or Wednesday.
You can do whatever you want.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, how are we gonna learn about this?
How are we?
Email?
How are we?
And you, and we're... And I'll bring back, you guys will, you guys will see your meeting schedule, once I have those dates, and we can make the adjustments, you'll vote on a new meeting schedule, and... Yeah, I can, I can do that, and you guys will see this reminder about the state of emergency, this exact same thing at the next meeting.
Yeah. Little draw, next up, we're, uh, we're, yeah, we're pretty, um, yeah.
What?
It's getting decorated.
Oh, me and Derek, oh, we got that. We're seeing, I like the dark gray.
Gray.
Dark gray.
What?
I would repeat, I like, I like, just see that, I don't know.
Okay, great, we're seeing, like, they, you guys.
Andy, you and I making those?
Yep. Yeah, you gotta do that too, hang on, Andy, we're good.
Alright, open tops, um, anyone else? Nobody has any? No, I don't see any, dude. Yeah.
Ken, can you start adding into the item, do you need to tell the public council, literally, like, just have, like, we just have a Tuesday, and then, all of us will have our Tuesday, Thursday after that, but anyway, can we start adding, I guess, the work sessions will have, we can break that.
Do you, do you want to do the network sessions?
Yeah.
I'll just add in with my communication stuff, because that's where I do all my stuff anyway.
They just did it that way.
Yeah.
For like one hour, if they were saying that.
Do, do you want to hear the whole line?
No, no, I need to convince her, I need to, like, snip it, and maybe, and, and... That's not what we have to talk about. Okay. Maybe if you want to talk, do one, 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 two, yeah, yeah, sure, that's okay, do a few of them, what happened?
Alright, we had, um, two visitations, let me get back, notes, two visitations, the first was Marcus, Marcus Williams, he had an issue with three things, uh, first off, he had, he had a septic tank system problem that he wants for what he needs to serve his home, he, the drain lines are relatively inadequate for that, so he wanted to see if he could tap into the Sedgfield community, um, as drainage, uh, source, uh, number two, he had an issue that where he lives, Huntley, I guess that's the street, right?
Mm-hmm.
He was Huntley, he can't turn left, because it's like what Andy deals with, it's, it's not too far from where Andy lives, so cars are coming by, you know, 100 miles an hour, blind curb, or whatever, and he, he wanted to know what he could do about that, and number three, he had a unique situation with a gravel road that goes into his property, it is owned by another person, and he wanted to pave it, and he's having difficulties with the owner, and he just owned that strip of property that he had to access his own, the other was a visitation by a planning board member, was Dennis and his mom, and the big thing there, that they were asking us two things, which was, will the Heritage District, and what we're doing with the road, really slow down the traffic, like, in other words, is it, is it a reality that that's something that happened, we talk about what we would like to do with crosswalks, and all sorts of stuff in the Heritage District, but would it really come to a reality of really slowing it down, and the second thing that came out, I think, pretty much impromptu, was with what we're talking about, with, um, the, the pump, uh, that would go there, the, could they access that, and we already kind of discussed that a little bit, that they, could they buy into that, and they, they'll pay for it, and they just want to know if that's gonna be made available to, uh, and that was it.
Uh, to go back to the first one, the gentleman, was he a renter or was he the owner?
No, she wasn't.
This is, there was another request that, um, yes, yes, that I, I was asked by a person who owns property a few doors down from Andy, that they're having septic issues, and wanted to know if they could somehow tap into, um, a line, if there wasn't one there within the Sedgfield, or, um, you and I talked about some other options and stuff, so, but that, I just had to check it, yeah, um, but...
So, there's, it sounds like a huge order.
What?
There's no sewer on Blackstone Harbor, and all, I, they're telling water for the sewer.
No, I know.
No, he was talking about tapping into, his backyard butts up to the Sedgfield community, which they are on sewer, and, and he wanted to see if they can access it that way.
But, but just what I, what I'm saying, is because he's so close to where you are, there is an individual just a few doors down, and he gets out, and he's having septic issues, and just was inquiring about, is there any chance that the sewer line would be coming through there, um, do you, do you know your neighbors want to, would they like to see a, a line down through there, and would that be something that you think, uh, I'm speaking, I know, for yourself, but also for maybe neighbors you've talked to, do you know anymore?
Well, nobody's, uh, come to you and said, you know, they were having issues with their septic, uh, most locks have a backup area, um, set aside for another septic system if one fails, uh, I mean, probably half of the state managed to count the water the other half, um, because we're all on those, so I think this could be individual, uh, circumstances, so, I have an issue, maybe five utilities here, and nobody that, you know, was meant to, they manage this on their own.
So, everything beyond Stacy having would flow the other way, correct?
I would have to go look at the contours, but you do have options in between the two of which way it flows, because it either could gravity feed all the way, tie into potential Broadmoor system, or it could gravity feed and tie into, um, the chimneys pump station, there is a force main that runs along Blackstone Harbor already, because that's where the chimneys is being pumped to, and it goes all the way that, that way, but the force main you can't tap into because of the pressure and all that, so it'd have to flow to the pump station.
Oh, so...
Yeah.
Alright, so, no, really, and then the second one was, and her first time, the second was...
Melinda.
Yeah, so they're looking at the potential to do this tapping.
So, I think it's a, it's a trick.
What? With Marcus. So, I had one of them, um, so we're looking to, yeah, part of the...
We actually thanked them for bringing that up as a possibility, because we said maybe that, you know, this meeting isn't gonna have, we can count, you know, we, we found this a solid one.
No, no, not that, slowing down the traffic.
Well, she, her, her thing was, we, this council, that, that that would be a way, and a means to slow the traffic down, and to reroute some more traffic.
I can't hear you.
How's that?
So, we, we addressed with the verb, that she said, we don't, I don't want that council to assume that that redirect traffic or slow traffic down, that there's gonna be a study or an analysis done, that if we did X, it would redirect traffic other, other places, or just bottle that to her sack, um, I, I'm perfectly fine, and, and open to doing the traffic survey, to see, maybe someone has done it before, and, and others, and those small ones like us, but, um, we should, we just need to ask that question, and try to give as much information on that as we possibly can.
But, regardless, if it does or doesn't, what does that have to do with everything?
She wants to know, she wants to know exactly what's gonna happen before it happens, so she says, okay, if we take that over through the Heritage District, and we make it speed up 20 miles an hour, and we go speed bumps, or speed hunts, or whatever it is, will that in fact change people's path, or are we just creating a bigger traffic jam in downtown Bar? I think the short answer is, we don't know, because it's... Well, what she said is, we should know, we should ask questions to DOT, to attract, to attract analysis from other people, and stuff like that.
Well, regardless of whether we pull this in or not, we try to take it first, and we're gonna take it first, that's the first thing, before we do any traffic studies or anything, but, I, I mean, I think that, you know, regardless, it'll be the eighteen miller's all of it.
If we take it.
If we take it.
So, it, and yeah, it's all, and we're, I'm confident with this council, before we do anything, before we say vote, okay, put it, we're gonna ask a hundred thousand questions, go around with it, okay, are we gonna create a bigger traffic jam, or are we gonna redirect?
Yeah.
That's, that, that's basically what she's looking for, and as I told her about, I was there, I, I'm confident, we, this council will ask all those questions, and probably then some, before we actually vote on it, because we are at that, to this, about, before a decision to make, and to make sure that we cover all the bases. To your point too, the, the coffee council, that's a great idea, but to add to that, I think, when we have these successes, when we have constituents come to us, as Marcus, we don't know Marcus, but we're gonna provide some relief to him, to the bigger picture, of people go, why would we exempt him? My first name is your representation, because if you have a, if you have a pay point in your HLA, if you're HLA, I tell you what, tell your president to run up the state, and he'll allow our DOT, see how hard he is, he's not gonna get you, unless he's somebody, somebody, but we should use these examples, with these constituents, that we're providing relief, we may not have the answer that they want, but we're providing relief because of the representation we're providing, that needs to be passed on some, I don't know what the means of it, but, you know, even if it's in the newsletter, or something like that, you know, we, you know, we sent so and so to, uh, at so and so, that's 1521, Mark School Road, we sent them to provide relief on this, we didn't provide the answer, but we provided relief, these things have to be communicated, and most people start hearing, like, you know what, I see what they're doing now, because there's some people, they, they don't care, unless, regret, because Joe said, I got this with that guy, but...
Yeah, so we need, but we need to talk about it, and then when we have this, we need to make sure that we tell Austin, that we can tell, what's her person's name?
Her name, her name is Jessica.
Jessica, what Jessica, that's it, we can...
There.
Talk about it, check, check, check.
Give me as much notice as possible, that's my only request.
Of course. Okay.
Alright, council just gave communications, Austin.
Speak of the devil.
I'm still doing that, we're talking about that.
Um, so in, in your Gus packet, you have the draft list for the month, um, it covers both August and September, um, I have sent this already on to our consultant, but if you guys change anything, I'll resend it, um, sorry, I gotta get back to my materials here.
Austin, can you send it out in four, five seconds, so I can see the, the mandate, beside the letter, right?
Hold on, let me pull it up, is something displaying weird?
I'm like, oh, well, Austin already...
Oh, gosh, oh, I'm sorry about that, that's weird. I will fix that, I don't know why it did that, um...
Then I got count on the yellow ones and white ones, to be able to take...
Well, trust me, I've double checked the date, so you're good, you're good there, um, but yeah, this is, this is the, what I have for the next two months, I've included some notes at the bottom for our consultant, just so that we stay consistent, do you guys have anything you want to add, anything I've left out?
What is S and A?
Social media date.
Can we make sure, like, we got on the Heritage Festival? Can we make sure, like, we put it on the Heritage Council, will we do like a separate thing for that, like just do their flyer or whatever, just have that on for them?
Yes, we're going to do social media posts that way. I've already got a ton of materials from there, from, from their people, and I've got, me and Jessica are supposed to have a meeting next week, so we're going to go over, go over that specifically.
So maybe just like an email?
Yeah, we can do that.
I did not have a.
Did that leave something off?
No, no, I don't have any.
All right, so, all right, website and analytics.
Analytics.
And.
That's the word of the day. So in your, in your guys' packet, I got these from our website host, Granite Sky. Their COO, Jared Brown, he's the one that works for us. If you guys look at it, and I haven't reviewed this in a good week or so, we had a lot of website traffic this past year, and most of it is due to Marvin Day. We had a ton of people log on to the website right around the date of Marvin Day. That's that huge spike. You also see some smaller spikes around the time of the election and with the candidate questionnaire. So we're doing all the right things as far as our website goes. We have good traffic. People, nothing's out of the ordinary is what I'm saying. When people are, who log on to the website, they're generally able to find what they need to find and get off. People really don't spend that much time meandering around, if that makes sense. And I've included a pretty detailed analysis in your packet from Jared, and I thought it was, I thought you guys would appreciate that level of detail.
Yeah, that looks pretty cool. I actually thought that was, right at the same time that it was, I ain't ever heard of movement that was going on.
That's one of you or Austin?
You were glued, Bob, you were glued to that screen for like two months.
Which is.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No.
Cool. Well, if you have any other questions about the website or analytics, just let me know.
Yeah.
Is this something you guys want to see on a, on a regular basis, something you want to see every few months or so, every year?
Every four.
Okay.
Or plus every six months.
Yeah.
I love there's something crazy or.
Well, just let me know.
Why don't you have that thought of anything?
I, we talked about getting something like, if you love this community support and everything else, I would think that we could have something like this on a monthly basis, after they had everything up and running.
Yeah, you're going to start seeing this for our communications. It's just not ready yet, because we're just, we're still so new into it. Yeah.
Wayne said he wants to see it on regular.
Well, I'm saying, we, we don't have communication stuff yet, because we just started. Yeah. You're going to, you're going to see that, though.
Okay, that's, I was wondering, I was going to say, you see.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
All right. So if you want, we start getting that information, you would like to see it like every month?
Yes.
Okay. What if we start getting, do that from now, social media stuff?
Mm-hmm.
But see, all your, all, once you start doing that, it'll just get a little.
Yeah, that's fine. And that's what I already have planned to do.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
All right, next up, managers report about these managers report.
Why?
What are you doing?
No, again.
Oh, my gosh.
What are you doing?
My manager report.
Yeah, I mean.
You think? This is my review.
Half the one down, half the one up, let her talk.
So the transportation improvement funds that you guys directed staff to work with the county on, give that 25,000, they sent us an inner local agreement. Chaplain and staff reviewed it. Basically, that will be brought back to you guys to approve slash sign probably within the next month, either at August work session slash September regular. But just so, you know, that's for any overages. And the way that agreement read is from end of July 1st or August 1st. Any overages for the roundabout, then we can use those 25,000 dollars, pass that date to fund or any, if we have any funds left over, then we can do a study slash construction documents for a roundabout at Gopar and Marvin. The Union County CZ application, I'm not 100% sure what the update is. Bjorn's been out of town last week-ish. I know that it was supposed to be at the county planning board level two weeks ago, so I'll make sure to have an update on the status of that at the council meeting. Because, and if they're having a public hearing prior for me to be able to give you that update, I will make sure you guys are aware slash we can maybe communicate that out to the residents, you know, for them to go to the county for that public hearing. Bonds Grove, Church Road, and Waxaw Marvin, I've been having conversations with Bjorn about looking at doing a CRTVO application for the round, for a roundabout there. The other thing that came up was working with, and as well as Waxaw. The other thing, since our experience with the current roundabout, that's going to be hopefully constructed in the next year, and the rise in construction costs, is maybe submitting an application for a temporary fix of that intersection, either a light stop, stop sign, some type of turn lane, something like that, to be a short-term solution, as well as it would be a cheaper option for the time being. That was presented. I did have a call with Bjorn and the engineer planner for Waxaw on Friday last week, and they're putting together, you know, some information on that. And then Joe, I'll be, Joe or Jamie, I'm going to get with you guys on that, because we're going to have a joint meeting with our CRTVO representatives and staff. Polty Park update, the development was turned, the HOA was turned over to the residents on Tuesday. I have the property manager's contact. I've already reached out to her to please see if I can be scheduled to discuss with them on their August meeting. Had not heard back from her, but that's my plan, is either August or September after later, so hopefully get in front of them. And I'll let you know the dates of whenever they confirm that. Marvin Loop update, so I actually just got an email that is, finally was put into the system where I can go get the agreement with DOT, basically stating that, so we can have, you know, transfer funding reimbursement. The other good news is that I was kind of worried we were a little bit behind. However, since the, since it's on, since DOT is on the federal calendar, the funds couldn't be dispersed anyway until October, so we can't really spend any money till October. So we'll have the agreement with DOT prior to then. We're going to do an RFP for consulting, engineering, and all of that for the project, and all of that will be ready to go. So when October 1st hits, we can hit the ground running with getting all that stuff ready.
So what the first phase is easements or right-of-way?
Basically, it's a engineering, actual design, and that will identify certain actual right-of-way, and all of that. And then the second part of it is then actually requiring the right-of-way, which.
That's the second part of the area.
Yeah, which they can overlap, I'm pretty sure, just the way it's set up in there. This whole thing is that any type of right-of-way reimbursement, we wouldn't be like, let's say, October, we get our plans back, March, April, whatever, we're all good with how everything's all set up. Well, we can start trying to require right-of-way, but then for us to get our reimbursement, we wouldn't be able to apply for it till October 1st of 2024.
That's okay. I was just, I was just, when you train your, if we have to up our some money, then what are we going to, this time is just something we should do it. But within, sorry, within the, within the first phase, the engineer's phase, in that phase, whoever we, whoever, whoever we RFP it to, they can be able to look and see where we already have right-of-way easements, correct?
Should, yeah. I'm working on putting together that RFP, but that's kind of deep standard space, but we'll have a consulting engineer that will take, because basically what we submitted was very preliminary, either where we already have sidewalk, or we already have right-of-way. And so now it's like actually getting the construction documents, where, where it needs to go.
Because like the front of my, we already have right-of-way access.
Yeah.
So.
I think there was six or eight properties.
That we already have that.
Well, that we have to acquire.
Okay. Is there a way to add, or is there a way to include in the RFP, like a map, when you have existing right-of-ways, that they can improve within that, is more? Yeah.
Should, yeah, should be. Because part of the RFP will probably put everything from our applications to middle. You know, probably go review the map. That map already shows where we have existing sidewalk, but then maybe even including that information on where we might have right-of-way slash some room within maybe the NCT DT right-of-way.
Yeah.
Instead of adding it.
Build it in there instead of.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they do a lot of this, add that into the, at least that when they look at it, they know that there's only, you know, four blocks more that they've got to figure out.
Okay. So, yeah, we're moving, moving right along on that, and since I just got this, I'll submit that agreement with DOT probably this afternoon. It'll probably, according to what the contact at DOT, probably take a month or two for DOT to get it back to us. So my goal is, I mean, getting it done, but then having September before the September work session, you guys enter it, we get it back to DOT, and we get confirmation, so then we can hit the ground running with everything. But in the meantime, yes, putting everything else together in the background, so we can, once again, continue moving forward on it. Last thing is the Preserve Internal Trail. I have, I don't know the status. I know that Derek provided you guys that update at the last meeting. I don't know where it's at in regards to construction. However, the easements have been sent over to the HOA to be signed. Basically, what we're doing is, where we already got approval slash potentially we're out of the easement, we're just doing a relocation of that easement. That's how that easement, the easement document reads, as well as then including the added connector piece. And I'm likely meeting with their board next week, so, but as far as I know, we should hope we have those signed. We're going to do probably have a final, an updated plaque, a plaque and app to even include with the easement when it gets recorded, where we have like an exhibit of minus coloring that you guys have probably seen in the past, and we'll do that as the exhibit, and then record and update the final plaque for the common open space showing the updated easements and trail location.
Perfect.
I think that's all.
Question?
Well, and the last thing I will mention, Derek brought this up, is I think Tommy put like a private property, no trespassing sign on the other side of the, the connector bridge. I, I did advise, which I'm pretty sure we, you guys conveyed this, of putting some type of railing or something that's showing that it's not supposed to be accessible to an extent, so we get the easement on Tommy's property for the full connector, but.
Do you have Tommy yet?
I'm not sure. Derek just said that there was a sign that said private property, no trespassing, or something like that, on, on his property side at the end of the bridge. Because that bridge goes right up to the Preserve property line.
Okay, I'd be interested to see. Was it done? Can I say this to other conversations?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
And I'll mention Derek did have a conversation with Marvin Creek about connecting.
Yeah.
That.
When he said it was one, did he, what did he say?
I'm pretty sure he had met, he had a call him on Wednesday, or Tuesday, and I'm pretty sure he met out. I printed him all these documents.
Where are you?
I'm pretty sure he met with him yesterday. The bright, the good side is that it's doable, because there's one existing sewer easement that's already through there, common open space in Marvin Creek, and I think he connected really, really nicely.
Hold on, I'll see what he said. See if he talked to him. He just went that way.
That's all I know.
What do you have? Yeah.
Let's do the.
Well, we're already done with it, basically. But what did, um, Marvin Creek say?
My meeting with Marvin Creek?
Yeah.
I'm on the mic?
You're on the mic. You're on, you're on speakerphone. How can you speak on the phone?
I met with the HOA representative, Marvin Creek, yesterday. And it was just an initial conversation, but it went really well. So he's very supportive of the idea, loves the idea. I'm going to meet with the trail builder tomorrow to see the route that he recommends. Basically, it's, he's got a fire that went around 800 feet in your feet. So.
Is that really the trail trail, like the, how did the tunnel down, he come back in, cut it with Marvin Creek?
The, yeah. So if it were to proceed, the bad news would be the cost. There are two creeks that we have to traverse. The main creek that comes from that convert company and borders that whole property, it actually forks off, and I think somewhere there, spillway, Marvin Creek spillway comes in, so we have to cross it twice. So we'd be looking at all an extra 10 grain in bridges, because one of those.
Well, they aren't similar, the kind of bridges that they have over by Trigger Cove, and half of those are good, run those paths just next.
Yeah, or, yeah, like a Warren Wall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be similar.
Yeah, similar to that.
It would be just like the bridge we just built.
Similar, yeah. Yeah, we just depend on the size.
Yeah.
But, so first step, pitch it to their HOA president, he's going to take it to their board, and then give us, you know, feedback on whether they'd be supportive of it or not. We don't think we spend any money if they're not.
And, and we wouldn't even need additional easements from the Preserve, because that, if you guys recall the map, there's already a fork off where we have technical easement anyway, which is on the property line, so that it's tough. Like, we wouldn't have to go through that.
So we would just give the easement for Marvin Creek?
Yep.
And obviously, would there be a little bit there, right?
He did ask if we were to go forward, if we would be able to see the idea of paving, like sidewalk, probably the first 20 feet. I didn't think we would have a huge opposition to that. It would match their sidewalk that runs behind paving circle, and aesthetically it would just be a little cleaner in, in the open, kind of green here over there, 40 kind of dollars in the woods. So I'll say, you meet us in the middle, I'm pretty sure we'll meet you at the middle.
Okay, cool. Very good. Thanks, Derek.
Good. All right, moving on, review of that tonight.
Okay.
Forty-seven.
Okay, so Christina will get an initial conversation started with DOT about the GeoBond.
Talk about it.
Christina will continue conver, Christina will continue conversations with Fifth Third Bank. Christina will get.
Any barriers at all?
What just happened?
The power grid, what do I get? What do I get for quarter?
I could have hit it.
Andy, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Andy, can you hear me?
We're good now.
Andy, can you hear me? Oh, I'm going to have to reset it.
You can hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's connected, so we should be good. Okay, Christina will put that AMT agreement on the consent agenda for the next meeting. Derek's going to submit the tree feeding proposal for the consent agenda at the next meeting. Help by the casing for the bulletin board. Christina is going to get Sheriff Kathy to sign off on that letter about disrupting meetings. We're going to, we're going to proceed with drink tickets for the ribbon cutting ceremony.
And bartender.
And bartender. Our tender. Christina will put the current irrigation quote on the consent agenda if she doesn't get any more quotes. Me, Christine, and Hunter, we have our marching orders on the annexation plan. We're going to get advice from Chaplain. We're going to start conversations with the chimneys and focus on the donut holes. Derek's going to add the median, on time short, to his guys' maintenance schedule, and I will get advice from Chaplain on whether you guys can vote during remote meetings.
And Andy, you and I need to figure out when we're going to start that lighting. I said.
Play it again.
I said you and I need to figure out when we're going to start that lighting, pick a weekend or whatever, whatever, once you do, pretty much my schedule's open, I just say.
You're around the camp the next light.
Except for the next, there you go.
No, I know you're not.
Joe, just as a follow-up to that, he asked me about, you know, possibly procuring a dingo with a trencher and an auger to.
What? Procuring a what?
A, a dingo, a, a piece of machinery to assist with that.
Yeah.
So I am trying to coordinate with him, you know, when that's the best day to do that, when he's available, so we can lay the, the wire in the ground and, but we have, we did go ahead, we did go ahead and buy the PVC pipes, you know, to make the sleeves for the poles and everything.
All right, all right, I'm getting down.
All right, moving on, review of that ongoing. All right, um, moving on, review of act, ongoing act. Kim.
Andy, have you got the prices for the papers around the fly pole yet?
No, I have not, I have a little, uh, work on that, probably tomorrow.
Thank you, has the tree been removed, the amber, amber, the amber, the tree, the amber, the tree? Oh, Derek, we're just talking about that, okay? Do you have it removed?
I can't hear you.
The amber, the tree, tree?
Has it been removed, the tree? No, it has not been removed, though the work order has been submitted in their system.
Okay. Now with that, I was facing on the generator again. No, we're supposed to have generator training just past Wednesday, and they didn't show up, so it's been rescheduled for work next Wednesday. They don't show up again?
You realize when we start that controlling blackouts from all of this, like, it's all the.
Manish said he would be here himself, and Manish said he would be here himself and assure that they show up this time.
You got here. I did.
What's nine AM this day?
Nine AM.
All right, you're good?
Nine AM. Everybody, I'm gonna show up, see if they, if they don't show up, I'll raise the sign. Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, moving on, council comments, Andy. Good. I wanna thank the staff again, we got, I mean, also, not, I'm gonna drive it, it's all.
You call me anytime, Wayne.
Every day. Jay, okay?
Okay. Well, on what Wayne said specifically, great job with that whole presentation on the annex, I mean, that was, that was really a great job, that we can get into annexation and know exactly where to go with it, and, um, again, specifically, Austin, great job with all of this technology, I mean, to imagine, we used to have two inches of paper and it's all right there, so you were, you were involved with putting that all together. And Derek, that great job, as I've been to the park and everything else, man, the place looks great, so, yeah, super job.
We have a park.
We have a park. We do a good job of it. Don't listen to them.
Never not work.
Never not work. No.
Kimber.
Um, did everybody just say, thanks to our employees and statement, you, but they do them, they say healthier, and then I also wanted to make a shout-out to Mayor from that, from this, he is a professional tennis player, and he won the fire poker tournament at our zone, and he won some money, why should he?
Okay, we didn't, no one won anything.
True, yeah. True. Right. Anyway, good job, there you go.
Thanks, Kimber.
You're welcome.
I made, I made her say that, by the way.
Mm.
As everyone knows, my tennis parlor license is not that, so, I had a very good partner. Yeah, I'm a tennis player, I had a very good partner, so. Uh, no, thank you again, I mean, everything's going on, it's just, you know, we're in it, it's eight cylinders, and, uh, appreciate that, appreciate all the work, staff, and the guys that put in all the good things, um, just got back from Asheville, a little cooler up there, enjoying some time with the family, and, uh, got to see App State, Whitstable, it's beautiful country, love the town, and everything, and stuff, but I'm just trying to envision every time I go to the, what's that?
You're not here.
You're not here, um, I'm trying to envision what this Heritage District will, you know, interview. Um, and with that, uh.
Do you like making votes? I forgot, I'm making votes, we have a play session for some, anything you have, one hundred three, that three one eight, that one one eight, five oh seven, or instructor calls like that, one hundred thirty, starting, you have a position to be taking about, how we told the body to, recognize another material, contract, business contract, they have to do real property purchase options, exchange of releases.
Further discussion, pause and debate. We are.
That what you did too? Is that why you said?
Put that? Yeah.
We are in close question.